Good afternoon, boys, girls, and MBs of all shapes, sizes, colors, and orientations. Welcome to the one and only Alec Gunther stream. My name is Alec Gunther. So good to have you all here. So good to be here alongside all of you. Let me turn this toward me a little bit. There we go. There we go. Uh, filter a little bit that way. There we go. I think that's fine. Hold on, I gotta turn on my AC real quick. It's very hot. Oh boy. Yeah, it's been hot lately. Hot and sticky and wet and moist. Hot. But yeah, what's uh, what's going on? What's up with you guys? What's uh, what's the dealio? What's the, what's the scoop? The biz-baz, the niz-nas, the this and that, the here-to and fro. So glad to see you're streaming again. When, I don't think I stopped streaming. Like, I had somebody comment that I quit uploading, that they, it had been a while since my videos showed up on their feed and they're glad I'm uploading again. It's like I haven't, like I've been uploading pretty regularly. Sometimes I go a few days without uploading, but um, you know, there's, there's internal reasons for that, but like a few days is not that long. I'm trying to get to the point where I start pumping out two videos a day, which I have been for like months and I just, it never manifested. I need you to explain something to me as I'm unfamiliar with the American healthcare system. I was watching your video on the Patriot Nurse, yuck, and you mentioned LPN and RN. So I'm just curious what, what they do and the difference, so I know what I'm the equivalent to. LPN stands for Licensed Practical Nurse. The main difference, the main difference, this is an over simplification. Um, there are two differences. One, Registered Nurses have a little bit more expertise, a little bit more training. So LPN is Licensed Practical Nurse, takes about a year and a half to two years to get your license. Registered Nurse, it took me about a year and a half, but that's because I went into an accelerated program. Usually it takes four years to build your, to get your license from the ground up for Registered Nurses. Uh, you can, it can be like two to two and a half years if you get your uh, Associate's Degree, but everywhere in the United States basically now, if you have an Associate's Degree, uh, that technically qualifies you as a Registered Nurse, but most places will require you to get your Bachelor's. They'll hire you as a, as an Associate's Degree, but they will require you to also get your Bachelor's. Um, like within a certain period of time. They want to know that you're working on it. So um, Bachelor's Degree in Science and Nursing is four years. I have my Masters of Science in Nursing. You're so cool, thank you. Um, which I think typically takes like six years to seven years, if I recall correctly. Um, but because I have a Biology Degree, I was able to get it in a year and a half. There's a lot of overlap between Biology, the classes you take for Biology and the classes you take for um, Nursing. Like, like for, to build up to Nursing, I should say. Obviously Nursing Classes are specific. Um, once you're in the program, but to build up to that point, you'd like having Biology Classes under your belt and uh, is uh, is a good, uh, very good thing to do. Like, well, it's required usually, I should say. It's very good because it's required. Um, anyway, back to the main point though. LPN, basically you can't work with IVs. That's the main difference. You're not allowed to work with IVs if you're an LPN. I think there are some others. Let's look it up real quick. LPN versus RN, just so I don't bullshit you. This is from Regis College. LPNs and RNs play distinct roles in healthcare. LPNs focus on task-oriented duties under supervision, while RNs take on broader responsibilities, including critical thinking and strategic healthcare management. Yeah, that's another thing. LPNs are a little bit more like the doers and RN, usually. And the RNs are more like care plans. We're care plan oriented, right? And we can uh, dish out tasks that need to be done. We're kind of like managers to LPNs, if you will. We're the, we're the movers and shakers. The LPNs are kind of the, the ground workers, the doers. Uh, LPNs generally complete a shorter certificate program, 12 to 18 months. Yeah, year to year and a half. RNs follow a more comprehensive educational path, often requiring a Bachelor's Degree to advance in their careers and meet licensure requirements. So the difference here, just for an example. An LPN, an LPN can tell you what to do if somebody is suffering from leg swelling due to, well, like if somebody's leg starts swelling, what do you do? Right? Um, you know, they can do some basic assessments on it. Okay, like there's some pitting. If you push into the skin, it like pushes in. Uh, you know, like they can, they can assess it and then determine what to do about it. But an RN can explain what's happening and like ascertain what the likelihood of what, like where the swelling is coming from. So for instance, like if your leg is swelling, um, if, if you see somebody with somebody with a swelled leg, usually the best course of option is to raise their leg. Right? You want to rate, you want to elevate the leg, get the swelling down, uh, because that helps the fluid. Well, the LPN wouldn't know this part. Well, they might, but the LPN uh, doesn't have to know that it helps the fluid drain down back into the body, right? Um, via gravity. An RN would be able to look at the swollen leg and say, okay, well, this is because this patient has heart failure. And heart failure causes edema in the legs. You know, and so I should tell the doctor, hey, um, you know, my patient is getting some bad leg swelling. There's pitting to the third or fourth degree, whatever. Uh, and we might want to like up a certain dosage of uh, spironolactone or uh, Lasix or whatever they're on to reduce the swelling, if they're not on it already. Like I could tell you, Lasix would usually be the first medication that you would give to somebody who's suffering from a heart condition and has leg swelling, because Lasix is a diuretic and helps you pee. Uh, a lot. Like, you think caffeine makes you pee. Um, Lasix is like that on steroids. Uh, the trans people, the trans, I've heard there are trans people. I've heard there are things in my audience. Trans women specifically, trans femmes, uh, who are on spironolactone. Uh, you may know that medication as a feminizing hormone, or not a hormone, a feminizing agent, I should say. Like, uh, I forget exactly how it works in uh, uh, trans medication. Uh, you guys could probably, yeah, T Blocker. That's what I thought it was, but I wasn't sure. Thank you. T Blocker. Um, but, trans girls, you probably also know if you take spironolactone, that it makes you pee. Doesn't it? Um, that's because its main use, its, its main labeled use is as a potassium sparing diuretic. Um, so you guys should also be getting your potassium levels checked just to make sure that you're not uh, hyperkalemic. Just so you know, uh, if you're on um, spironolactone. Because it drains, like with Lasix, potassium goes out with the pee. But with spironolactone, potassium does not go out with the pee. So if you have somebody with a heart condition, but also they're lacking in potassium, you would give them spironolactone. Yeah, we can't do anything without delegation from the nurse. Uh, interesting here, we have nurse and assistant nurse. Assistant nurse just listens to the nurse and helps them. I would say assistant nurse is a lot more like LPN. Um, in the United States, unfortunately, we play it fast and loose with LPNs because we suck. Like we suck really bad. Um, so LPNs basically ran the show when I was at the nursing homes. Um, if we did it properly, uh, I would have been like more in charge of the LPNs. And technically I could order them and tell them to do things, but I was just a baby nurse, so I didn't do that. And also they all knew what they were doing already and I had my plate full, so like I was basically doing all the same shit. They were, the only time that it really came into play at the nursing home for me was when an LPN had a patient with a uh, IV, and like they knew everything to do. They literally told me what to do with the IV. Uh, but they just literally could not do it because they're not allowed. So I had to do it. It's the only time it ever actually mattered in the nursing home. Finasteride is also a testosterone suppressor? Yes, I've heard that. Finasteride just helps prevent testosterone from converting to DHT. Very nice. Yeah, trans people are really on their shit. They usually like, it's not just trans people either. Like anybody who's on a medication regimen, uh, usually they're pretty good about knowing like what's going on with it. Like they're curious, they do research. I mean, I've had patients teach me things about their conditions, you know? So trans people definitely probably know more than, than I do about their own regimens. I'm not a Spyro cell, but a Biculit, big, how the fuck, big, I'm usually really good at pronouncing this, big. Bicolutamide, bicalutamide. Is it bicalutamide? Bicolutamide. Or is it beca? Bicolutamide. Beca ludamide. Used together with a luteinizing hormone-releasing hormone analog to treat, to treat stage D2 metastatic, metastatic prostate cancer, uh, cancer that has spread in men. Bicolutamide belongs to the group of medicines called anti-endoogens. Yeah, so same thing, same idea as finasteride.
Hey kids, what's up?
Okay, thank you very much for the raid, Tina2, Tina underscore 2. Go to twitch.tv/tina underscore 2 if you want to go follow her. Which you should go follow her because she does a lot more Palestine, uh, Israel-Palestine coverage than I do. By a lot. By a lot. Um, frankly, I don't do enough. I've been meaning to do more. I just don't. It's, it's really shitty stuff, guys. It's really shitty. Um, but Tina does a lot of coverage for that, so go follow her. Welcome in everybody. Yeah, it's very depressing, indeed. Hello Potato Band. Potato butt plug. I know you're Regis, I know you. Who prefers injections over tablets? Uh, I was on testosterone injections for a while. I don't, I mean it's, do you do it the same route? Cause T injections were uh, sub Q. I would imagine it's the same for estradiol because they're both steroids, so they're fat soluble. Um, I personally would recommend the injections if you can handle them. Simply because uh, they'll be more effective. You'll have more control over it. Um, but if you can't handle the injections, oral is fine as well. Are they cheaper? Yeah, I think that there's a sublingual. For those who don't know, sublingual is under the tongue. There are uh, what is the technical term? There are thingies under your tongue. That's the, that's the scientific term that we call them thingies that absorb the medication. So these thingies under your tongue are uh, better at absorbing medications, a lot of medications than uh, your stomach would be at. Yeah, the mucosal membrane, thank you. Queen Laura, you're on your shit. You should be the nurse. Uh, if the title is in reference to Ryan Walters, I can give some extra background on him if you want. I would love that. Uh, yes, it is in fact in reference to Ryan Walters. Uh, I just thought that it would be more grabbing to be like, oh yeah, it's a conservative politician. Oral? Yes. And get, you'll get a kick out of this one too. Some medic, uh, some medication, why can't I talk today? I feel like I've done it like three times. Some medications are actually uh, rectal, AKA anal. I've given some of those, so. Usually laxatives, but you can rectally administer a lot of medications. Ah, God. I'm bringing up memories I do not want to be brought up. God, I'm bringing up memories I do not want to be brought up. One in particular, I used to work at the Drug Rehab Center. So guys there, no, this was at the homeless center, the homeless shelter, because the Drug Rehab Center worked with the homeless shelter. And so a lot of guys there unfortunately just didn't take very good care of their hygiene because they literally can't sometimes or weren't taught how. And I had to give one guy, I had to help him take a suppository. It was gross. Me when I put tea in my butt? I don't think that would, I mean, it might. I've never heard of rectally administered tea. I think that it's much more effective to do an injection. I work at a nursing home with 85 people and there's three nurses in the house. The rest are assistant nurses and care assistants. Sounds about right. I used to work in nursing homes, man. They sucked ass. Most of my friends are on various transdermal, either patches or gel spray. Yeah, that's, my dad's on, I think my dad was on transdermal tea. Like there's a lotion for it. Lotion, gel, gel, there's a gel for it. There's a distinction between lotion and gel. We got a lot of chatters today. Sorry if I don't get to everybody. I usually can, but we're very busy today. Maybe I should stream, I should stream this early more often. I think that this is a prime time for me. I'm doing it today because me and Tina, who just raided and you should go follow, are playing Walking Dead Telltale tonight. It's a very good game. If you haven't watched Walking Dead or played the Telltale games, they're very good. Girl back, indeed. Ryan is a real big piece of shit. He literally joked about the death of next Benedict and pressured the ME, pressured the ME to rule their death as suicide. I have to ask, I know that next Benedict's situation was very tragic. But just completely beside that, their name is a reference to Eggs Benedict, right? Okay, thank you. I don't want to be crude to a tragic situation. This has nothing to do with next Benedict specifically. I have noticed though, next Benedict was non-binary, right? He died from brain injury from bullying. What was next Benedict's pronouns? They, them? Okay, yep. I have noticed that, and I'm not making fun of anybody here, but I have noticed that non-binary people love to name themselves after like food or objects or like, I've mentioned this on stream before. I have an, Katie, I should say, we both have a friend, but she, sorry, they were originally Katie's friend and their name is Sky, which they changed it to after coming out as non-binary. There's one person I know who's much technically like more well-known than I am, who works with the, the people who threw soup on paintings, the soup on paintings people, named Celery? I thought it was he/him. If it was an honest mistake, it's not a big deal. I usually default to they/them unless like the name tips off. If the name's masculine, I'll default to he/him. You guys get the idea. But next Benedict, I was like, that's non-binary coded. I met an NB that goes by sock. Very nice, very nice. I could see sock, okay, sock could be either like an NB name or it could be like the whitest name you've ever heard. Like, think like sock. Let me think, sock Davids. Or Davis, sock Davis. Just like an extraordinarily white new age name. Tooth and nail, is that two different non-binary people? Or is that just one? Everyone is they/them until declared otherwise? Listen, people are going to look at me and assume he/him and they would be correct in that assumption. I've talked about this before. If you look like me and you want to go by they/them pronouns, there's nothing wrong with that, obviously. There's also nothing wrong with wanting to go by she/her pronouns if you look like me. I am telling you though, we live in a society in which that is simply not going to be the default for you. So as long as you live around people who are willing to correct themselves, you know, you do kind of, like we live in a gender cuck society, so you kind of have to take the piss. You know what I mean? You just got to be like, eh, it's actually they/them, but you know, that's fine. We do indeed live in a society, yeah. Can you control your president patrol pump is beefing with India? No, I cannot control my president. If I could, well, there are things I can't say due to the TOS. Let's just say he wouldn't be president. I've been diving back into Twitter lately. It's not been good for my mental health. These people are fucking morons, who I'm especially upset with right now. You guys want a little bit of tea? You guys want a little bit of drama? I gotta change that. I hate that just a capital X is the Twitter logo. I get the joke, but it's so stupid. Stacy K has been pissing me off. I follow Stacy K, we're oomphies, we're oomps, and I agree with like 90% of the shit she has to say. But my God, like I'm so fucking tired of this shit. I am so fucking tired of this. So our options are, well, first Onion Person posted, "I don't want Vance to be president, but what are queer people supposed to think when it seems like people in the Democratic Party are ready to drop all support of us to vote for a guy like Newsom?" First of all, don't worry about JD Vance being president. I would, I don't think that'll happen. I'd be shocked if that happened. My money, you guys know my money's on Tucker Carlson, if we allow it. I think if things keep going at the rate they're going, we will eventually find somebody who can outdo Tucker Carlson, but I do think that, here's my prediction, my official prediction, 2028 nail biter, absolute fucking nail biter. Within the next two years, some young spry progressive, and by young, I mean like younger than 60, is going to pop up and just wow us, right? Either that or it's going to be like Tim Walz. Because Tim Walz frankly would be a fantastic candidate in my opinion. He's not everything that we want, but he is most of what we want. He's very charismatic and he's got, I think he's too nice. I think if he, if he sharpens his edge just a little bit, he could easily body Tucker Carlson, easily. But I do think, maybe not easily, it would be like mid diff, mid diff.
I have someone I know who is trans and under 18. He is a trans boy and he is afraid to transition because some family members are not supportive and Republicans are in power. His mom and stepdad are supportive, though.
Thank you very much for the $20. Very kind of you, Jackie Sins. Tell that person that, tell your trans friend that he is, you know, doing the best he can and things will get better. He has to believe that things will get better. I know that's easy for me to sit up here on my high horse and say, but you know, he can talk to anybody. Unfortunately, my Discord server is 18 and over. But if he were to talk to anybody in my, in my server, in my community, they could tell you or they could tell him that like things do get better, even if you're in a terrible, terrible situation. The older you get, the freer you get. You just got to grind and try to make it happen. And tell him that, you know, tell him he's valid and we're all rooting for him. So what I was saying about the presidency was that before I get back to the, sorry, I branch off. I'm getting better at returning to the thing that I wanted to say initially, but I still branch off really badly because that's still part of my ADHD. But let me complete the branch off. My prediction for president is Tucker Carlson versus, if it's not Tim Walz, I would like to see somebody that Mom Donnie personally supports. Like I want Mom Donnie to be the kingmaker. I don't want to get into like what demographics they might be, although I will tell you unfortunately, likely not a woman. I hate that. I hate saying that, but like it's probably not going to be a woman, guys. I think a woman could win. It's not that I don't think a woman could win. I just don't think that the Dems would, like they might capitulate to a progressive, but I don't think they'll run a woman again. But my prediction is some other spry, young, under 50 socialist, right? Or at least somebody who's willing to say, I have critiques on capitalism. If not that, the other prediction I have is it's Tucker Carlson versus fucking Gavin Newsom and then it's GG. It's GG. Like if that happens, Tucker Carlson will drag us down to the pits of hell and that'll be the end of it. Yeah, we need someone young with big air quotes. Yeah, dark woke candidate. Dark woke would be amazing. I think Hassan, sorry Hassan, now I'm being racist. I think that Zoran Mamdani, which I'm, who I'm repping today, actually. Very nice. I think that he's doing a very good job of repping the dark woke and I think he's going to be the kingmaker and we have to make sure that he is. Get your Zoran Mamdani rep merch. You can get it on Patreon, Etsy. My brain is slowly untangling, sorry. I'm tired today. Anyway, back to the main thing I wanted to say though. First off, I want to point out Stacy K actually has, I won't bother opening it because this isn't like an official segment. Stacy K actually has a tweet where she says Gavin Newsom will not be, will never be president. So that's one. That's from March of this year, literally three months ago, four months, I can math, five months ago, five months ago. In response to this, she says, which you've probably read by now, "So our options are a guy who wants us criminalized, imprisoned and dead, or a party who might nominate a guy who might support a bill to ban trans people from sports. Gee, what are queer people supposed to think? That's a tough one." This is after, by the way. Like, like I said, I scrolled through her posts and most of them I agree with, but she has just no critique, no critique. Like look at this, she glazes these fucking liberals, man. Glazes them. Sarah McBride, I'm sure she's doing good stuff, but she is the first trans representative of the House ever, the first trans person ever in the House, and she can't even fucking stand up for trans rights. That's pretty shitty. Sorry, I expect better. I'm willing to give her a lot of charitability, a lot of charitability, but I tried, man, and she's just not it. She's not it. I don't know why she felt the need to glaze John Fetterman, but here she is glazing John Fetterman. So that's pretty cool. But where's the one I'm really mad about? Here we go. "The only achievable goal with," just completely unprompted, out of nowhere, "the only achievable goal with trans people in sports is to prevent blanket bans. Let it be a case-by-case basis. That's how young girls, how young trans girls were allowed to play on the girls team and it was working until the red states passed blanket bans. That's the goal, don't forget it." Is it poss- or no, that wasn't even the one. That wasn't the one. That one pissed me off. Here it is, here's the one. "I'm tired of hearing takes about trans sports from trans people who hate sports. Please sit this one out and let the people who actually know things about sports talk." Like fuck off. You know, guys, I'm tired of hearing takes about black people in sports from black people who hate sports. Sit this one out, black people who hate sports. That's Stacy K in the 1960s. Sounds really fucked up that way, doesn't it Stacy? I'm so tired of fucking black people who don't even like sports talking about how they should have the right to participate. It's just gross. It's like even if that is what you think, right? I'm willing to cede, obviously, that there are like minute things to consider when it comes to trans women in sports, sure. But at the end of the day, if they're women, and it's women's sports, women should be allowed to compete, including trans women. Okay, if you want to put restrictions, make the restrictions universal. Make them universal, okay? You cannot lift over X amount of weight. If you can lift over X amount of weight, you do not get to participate. Your T levels cannot be this high. If your T levels are this high, you cannot participate. Make it consistent. You know, I don't like these fucking gene rules. I think they're stupid as all get out, but at least it's consistent. You know? Like consistency is the first goal for me. The second goal is just blanket merging of sports. I think that the sports should be merged. I don't give a fuck what people think about that. Yeah, fucking merge them. Who cares? They're sports, literal entertainment, okay? Who gives a fuck? They originally wanted, women originally in the good old days wanted to participate with the men and the men wouldn't fucking let them. That's why there's women's sports. They were forced to start their own leagues. And now we're like, well, they were started to protect them. No! They were started because the men wouldn't let them fucking compete. I'm just so fucking tired of liberals on their goddamn high horses being like, well, we can't critique, we can't critique the liberals in power right now. If we do that, then we're undermining them. No, we're just like not kowtowing and we have some fucking standards, Stacy, okay? God damn it. God fucking damn it. Did she unfollow me? Uh oh, we're not oomphies anymore. Yeah, she unfollowed me. Fuck you. Fuck you, you fucking liberal. You know what I think pissed her off? You know what I think, you know what I think did it? Here, I'll show you the conversation. I replied to this one. I replied, "We should really be spending our energy whipping the Democrats into shape rather than hemming and hawing about how, about people expressing very understandable frustration over the party's fecklessness." She says, "I think there's a higher chance of disenfranchised queer people reading my tweets than Democrat insiders." And I said, "You could be convincing those people to call their representatives or organize locally or run for office themselves instead of tut-tutting them for criticizing the Democrats." "I don't want Juniper to run for office. I want her to stop down," she's also very selective in the things that she responds to, by the way. Like I've noticed this about her tweets too. It's really fucking annoying. She'll pick one thing that I said and hone in on it and act like it's the whole, the whole picture of what I said. "I don't want Juniper to run for office. I want her to stop downplaying the threat of advanced presidency and encouraging apathy towards a party who has had our backs at every turn." That's hilarious. I said, "Had our backs at every turn, Kamala Harris couldn't even sever the dead weight of the Biden administration. She ran to the right of him on immigration and was dead silent about queer rights. You're delusional if you think the Democrats give a shit about us." She replies, "I've organized at the state level with Democrats fighting all of the anti-trans laws being pushed through Missouri. Democrats were with us the whole way. At the federal level, they have held the line and been perfect in voting against all anti-trans amendments and bills." Yeah, that's great, except they're a fucking minority now, so it doesn't matter. They handed fucking power over to the fascists. It doesn't matter now. They can, they can vote against anti-trans amendments all they fucking want now. It doesn't matter. They already lost. GG. "I don't care if Kamala didn't pander to us enough in her campaign. What I care about is voting record." I replied, "What I care about is results, which the Democrats have demonstrably not provided. They handed the country over to a fascist on a silver platter. Trump should be imprisoned and branded a traitor. The Biden admin had four years to see that. Why are they immune from criticism?" So it branched off into another convo. Here, actually, let me see. Oh yeah, here, this dumbass. The voters did that. The voters are the final check and balance. The voters did that. The voters are the final check and balance. This is why I need to get off Twitter. It's such fucking brain rot. Uh, so Josh Gill says, Stacy, you literally fled the state because Democrats failed to beat the most unpopular president in history and handed the fascists all three branches of government. What does it mean to have our backs if they consistently fail to stop these people? To which Stacy replies, no, I fled Kansas because Republicans gained a veto proof su- su- How do they gain a veto proof super majority? Stacy, how did that happen? The Democrats' policies are so great, right? They do such a good job. There's nothing they can do, man. There's nothing, they, they're just little guys. The Democrats are just little guys, guys. You wouldn't hurt a little guy with glasses. I fled Kansas because Republicans gained a veto proof super majority in Kansas. And the Dem governor's term is up in 26 and I know she'll be replaced by a Republican. How do you know that? How the fuck do you know that? You've already given up, dude. You've given up. I moved to a state that has a, a Dem super majority that won't be challenged. State matters more than federal. So I just reply, I'm, I'm over it at this point. So I just replied, fitting that you would move to a place where the liberal leadership is never challenged. That's it. I'm three minutes behind. Nice. Cowardly. Thankfully, I don't think I've been reading the chat for three minutes, so it doesn't matter. To be fair, the people who actually know things about sports in this discussion would unironically be grouped in with someone. The likes of Joe Rogan, because they like to commentate on a sport or something, the same people who think that like being a trans is a costume. Yeah, but like actually know things about sports, like when I think that. When it comes to trans people in sports, I say yes, leave it to the scientific experts. Let them decide who's like. Through scientific means. And through a good. Argument, let them demonstrate why. We need to limit certain things, but don't just say trans people can't compete. That's not scientifically based. That is an arbitrary assignment. Based on somebody's fucking identity. Because of how they were born. It has nothing to do with what they're currently capable of or any advantages uh, they have now. Okay, trans people can compete. Why? Oh, because they're generally taller. They generally have more muscle mass. They generally have higher testosterone. Guess what? These are all things that we can individually test. So if you want to have those standards, make them universal. Cis and trans women, both. If you can't abide by the standards, you don't get to compete. If you can, then you do. Whether you're cis, trans or otherwise, it doesn't fucking matter. If I liked women, I'd absolutely be T for T with a trans woman. You can still be T for T with a trans man. The transphobic sports law will apply to cis people too. Uh, it creates a, yeah, yeah, exactly. It creates a legitimate scrutiny for the gender expression of the bodies of women. Yeah, so like. I don't like the, I don't like the new restrictions, like the gene restriction they just added. I don't like it. Okay? Um. But they're gonna find out. They're gonna start like banning cis women. And then they're gonna be like, well, we took it away. We took it away now. We took it away, but like trans people still can't compete because uh, 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 flails arms. Reasons. Cause it was never about fairness. It's about fucking over trans people. You think it's gonna stop at sports? You think they're just gonna be like, well, I literally just only did not want trans women to participate in women's sports. That was like my entire deal and now that that is no longer the case, I am satisfied. What fucking person have you talked to who thinks that? Like a person who actually advocates against trans women competing in sports openly and outwardly, like on Twitter or whatever. You know, what person only thinks that? None of them. It always proceeds to the next step. It's trans women in sports. Then it's trans women in bathrooms. Then it's trans women in any women's space. Then it's trans women getting medications. Then it's any people, uh, any trans people getting medications. They'll start at children's medications and then move their way up to adults. Then it's trans people existing in public. You're not allowed to cross-dress in public and cross-dressing quote unquote. Is if you're born with a dick and balls and you wear a dress. You can't do that in public or else we'll send you to jail. Oh, they'll start with children. You can't be around children and then you can't be in public, right? And then you can't be trans at all, not even behind closed doors. If you're caught wearing a dress and you got a dick and balls. If somebody report, if somebody's spying on you and they report you, you can be arrested for that too. Now we've effectively uh, eradicated trans people from all facets of life. Congratulations. It stops there though, doesn't it? Sure, buddy. They'll stop there. They'll, they'll stop at the trans people. Promise, bro. It always stops with the trans people. Never, never proceeds beyond that. Ever. Fascism is not known for doing that. I can, but I love my cis boyfriend. Cringe. Imagine being a cis boyfriend. I can't. That's not where it stopped in the sixties? That's ridiculous. The sixties don't exist. History started yesterday. Okay, I've been stalling for like an hour. Let me go pee real quick and then we'll get started with the first segment. Okay, I'm back. One quick thing before. Just one quick crochet update. Um, I do have one out of six tails. Stitched onto volpicks here. Uh, so that is one tail out of six. I have th- uh, two other tails made at this point. I also have back feet now. So she is now in a nice little sitting position with the feet there. Um, I still need to get pink paw pads on the back feet. Um, and then I need five more tails. And I also need hair on the back and then she's also gonna get a mouth. Uh, it's gonna be a nice little open mouth, open mouth smile. Huge. It is in fact a life-sized volpicks. This is uh, approximately the size that a volpicks would be in real life. Probably not this anime-esque, but there you go. You can imagine you will go to the anime and get animized. Instead of volpicks becoming boring ass flesh and blood. You, you become the cool manga person. Rather than the reverse. I do take commissions. If you hit me up on Discord, it's the best way to get ahold of me. Um. You can also do it uh, very easily from my Etsy store, etsy.com/shop/GunterGrabs. I'm thinking about making a Lux Ray since it's one of my partner's pokeys. Oh, pokies, pokeys. Same thing. Uh, yeah, Lux Ray's awesome. I love Lux Ray. She's adorable and I love her. I'm glad you think so. I was gonna ask you about the tail before I showed it on, but then I was like, it's probably fine. My initial plan for the tail. Was to have wires inside so that you could move them around. Unfortunately, the wires, there's just no internal skeleton. And because there's no internal skeleton, there's nothing for like the wire to latch onto. And so it just kind of bends and the tail would droop. So I can't do that. Um. My shuckle has an internal skeleton. Which is why I was able to make. Arms this big. With wires that let them flex around. And I still need to finish that. I will finish it one of these days, I promise. I've been sitting on it for so long, I just. Every time I think about finishing it, I'm like, well, I have to undo some stuff because I fucked up here and. That is so cool. Thank you. Yeah, exactly, Lady Nova. So I stitched it onto the back. Hopefully that's okay. Um, the, those, the, the two biggest middle tails will be stitched onto the back and then the other tails will be stitched to those tails. It looks great. I'm glad you think so. We're getting close. My sister made me a mimicue one for Christmas. I almost cried. Um, I guess I'll show you real quick too. Last thing and then we'll start the segment. This isn't a big one. This isn't very exciting, but it is cute. Oh yeah, there's one other thing I have to talk about. Sorry. Um. I made uh, this for the night shift nurse at my job, because it was her birthday. So I just drew this together real quick. Little orange boy. These are real easy to whip out. I need to put these on the store, honestly. And then um, the other thing I wanted to look at real quick. For the One Piece fans here, any One Piece enjoyers? For the One Piece enjoyers here. Uh, if you didn't know, on my channel, we've been doing a hot guys from One Piece competition. So the winner of the Straw Hat Crew, the hottest man on the straw, on the Straw Hat Crew. Is uh, Rorinora, no, none other than Rorinora Zoro with Sanji being the runner up. Uh, but it is a clear split in my audience. We clearly have a favorite here. One Piece is super long, indeed. Um, and then we have, I did uh, Water Seven next and I did include the traitors. I did include the traitors. Um. So we came down to Polly versus Rob Lucci. It was a, it was a little tighter. It was a little tighter. Uh, Rob Lucci did take. A decently comfortable lead though. So Rob Lucci's the hot man for Water Seven, even though he is a trader, traitorous scumfuck. Um, and then we did furries. We did the furries of the show, the furry men, uh, also known as um. Minks. The animal peoples. Uh, and a surprise. Upset. A surprise upset. It came down to these two. Now, for enjoyers of the series, you'll understand why this, I find this so interesting. And so disappointing. Like, are you fucking kidding me? Most people who watch the show probably didn't even know that Faust exists. I bet you didn't know, did you? Critical Ace Theory with the raid. Thank you very much for the raid. Appreciate you. Go follow Critical Ace Theory if you're not already. Hello, hello, welcome in. We're just going over the One Piece handsome boy polls. Hot guy polls. So yeah, Pedro lost to a character that was shown for all of four seconds. And he's from um. You don't remember Faust because he was never even fucking named in the manga. Like I think he was named uh, on a, a Viver card or some shit. He's part of Hawkins Crew. Former crew, I should say, because Hawkins is a piece of shit. And uh, cucked himself to Kaido. So who knows what Faust is doing now, but apparently he's hotter than Pedro, so that's cool. And now we're onto giants. So if you're a One Piece fan or just an enjoyer of hot men in general, and you think you have divine taste in men. Get onto my uh, posts page and go vote. Right now we have Dory versus Brogi. I don't know anything about hot guys or One Piece. That's okay. You can still vote for funsies. You can, you can vote for which one you, you think looks more fun. Dory and Brogi are real ones. Dory obviously is the clear favorite here. I, I have to agree. Um, I love Brogi. I think that he's a little bit more friend shaped and Dory is a little bit more sexy man shaped. So I understand this one completely. But yeah, we're just having a good time with that. Okay. People came here for juice. Oh yeah, I was also looking for um. Okay, there we go. Dory and Brogi are a gay couple. I will die on this hill. That's like saying. That's like saying two plus two equals four and I will die on this hill. It's like, what do you, what's the dying part? Who are you fighting against? Who are you defending against? Did you see? Did you see Brogi's reaction when he thought he accidentally killed Dory? Like, don't get me wrong. They were fighting. They knew that death was an option. Not an option. Death was a possibility. But as soon as it happens, Brogi's not happy. He won. He's like, my friend is dead. No. And then of course, you know, as Oda does, cop out. But to be fair, I think that was not, not, not among the more egregious cop outs. I think that that one was completely fine. And especially because it was so early in the series and we weren't used to like dead people coming back to life yet. We hadn't hit Alabasta yet. So I, I was willing to accept that one. And frankly, if Brogi had been dead, I feel like that would have really brought down the mood in that arc. Um, so I am fine with him being alive. I love men. I'm glad you love men. I'm one of those things. So thank you. I love you too. Okay. Politics. People, bad people. We, we have to look at bad people doing bad things now. So there's a fellow by the name of Ryan Walters. And he is a school board representative from Oklahoma, I believe. Uh, I don't know much about him, but Queen Laura decided to share something, a little bit of a, a little tidbit with me. Uh, if you're familiar with a person known as Eggs Benedict. Um, I believe that Eggs Benedict was an unfortunate victim of a, an assault. And unfortunately passed away as a result of the incident. Is that correct? Or did Eggs Benedict, did Eggs Benedict take their own life? No, Eggs Benedict was assaulted, right? Next Benedict. I don't know why I said Eggs Benedict. Well, I know why I did. It's a clear play on the word Eggs Benedict, okay? Anyway, it's a very sad situation. Fuck up on the name aside. Um, Next Benedict was a very unfortunate assaulted and then they took their own life. Okay, very mu- very good. Thank you. Um. So essentially. Murdered. Right? Like. Every time a trans person is assaulted for being trans or uh, attacked for their identity. And then they. You know, succumb to depression, to anxiety, to those evil, evil thoughts that are put in their head by the society, by the transphobic society in which we live. I consider that a murder. Um. Technically. Yes. It was their own hands that did it. But. It was the society that killed them. They were killed and murdered by society. So, uh, what did Ryan Walters decide to add to this discussion? So, uh, what did Ryan Walters decide to add to this discussion? Following a furious review from outraged Oklahomans, Ryan Walters uh, continues to spread hate, maligning and misgendering trans student Next Benedict. Um, in a response to an op-ed published today by Oklahoma State Superintendent of Public Instruction, Ryan Walters, who seeks to divert blame for the death of non-binary Oklahomateen Next Benedict following a bullying incident that took place at school, Kelly Robinson, Human Rights Campaign President, released the following statement: "It is ludicrous and offensive to see Ryan Walters painting himself as an opponent of bullying and defender of children while in the same breath, he misgenders and insults Next Benedict, the young Oklahomateen who died following a school bullying incident on his watch in the state school system that he leads. This is further evidence that he does not have the vaguest idea of how to actually run a state school system and is interested in nothing but raising his own profile, insulting a teen who died in tragic circumstances, fanning the flames of hatred, and attacking the entirety of Oklahoma's LGBTQ+ community. Ryan Walters, you should be ashamed of yourself. Resign now." Um, what was his statement? I thought this was going to give us his statement. Ah, there's a video. Excellent. Let's take a look. "After the death of Next Benedict, Oklahoma State Superintendent Ryan Walters is standing by anti-LGBTQ+ policies implemented in the state schools."
School, we want every student to be protected. We want every student to be successful.
No you don't.
So we want every child to feel that way. That also means we're not going to lie to students and we're not-
Sorry. Try that.
Not going to push a gender ideology.
Fuck you. "About 350 national, state, and local organizations are calling for the removal of Walters as state superintendent."
Okay, so, so they just up and decided to start messing with you, there was-
Yeah, because of the way that we-
Uh, I should give a content warning. Obviously, we're talking about a very, a very heavy subject here. Um, it will get lighthearted later in the, in the uh, in the segment, but for right now, this is tragic stuff. "Footage from the Awasso Police Department captured Next telling a school resource officer that he, they had poured water on three students because they were bullying Next. Authorities are awaiting the full results of the autopsy and toxicology reports for more insights surrounding the teen's death." Okay, we, we don't need any of this. Uh... Hold on, where's like the full quote? "In his first interview, reacting to the death of the student Next Benedict, Mr. Walters told the New York Times that the death was a tragedy but that it did not change his views on how questions of gender should be handled in schools. There's not multiple gen-" This is right after, by the way. This is like literally right after." Hello? Sorry, I don't know if you heard that, my phone went off like three times. There's not multiple genders, there's two. That's how God created us. Your God is fake, okay? If you love your God, what do I say, folks? Say it with me. If you love your God so much, go meet him. Okay? Uh, saying he did not believe that non-binary or transgender people exist. He said that Oklahoma schools would not allow students to use preferred names or pronouns that differ from their birth sex. Yeah, you killed this, this person. You killed this poor, non-binary child. "You always treat individuals dignity or respect because they're made in God's image." No, it's not because they're made in God's image, it's because they're people who deserve basic fucking dignity and respect. That doesn't change truth. The truth is, you suck, you fucking suck dude. You killed this person, that's the truth. You killed Next Benedict. You and your ilk. You are directly responsible for this. So, now that we've gotten the taste of blood in our mouth, I shouldn't say it like that, that sounds awful. Now that we've, you know, developed a intense hatred for this person, I'm getting a call now. Give me a second. Dubz, cut out what I just said there, that was a little crude. Okay, spam call, sorry. Okay, so, now that we've established a, a healthy hatred of this disgusting individual, um, this is not what I want. Let's... Where is it? I have too many tabs, too many tabs. Okay, we now get to the fun part. Where uh, Ryan Walters was caught apparently uh, watching porn during a school board meeting. Let's take a look.
Yeah, OME S, the Office of Management and Enterprise Services, is asking the Oklahoma County Sheriff's Office to-
Man of God, by the way. Uh, very devout, holy man of God, watching, I believe lesbian porn as well, just to, you know, throw that in there.
Look into Ryan Walters' serious allegations. They wanna know if anything was illegally done within this building at last week's Board of Education meeting.
So, OME S did reach out to us and they asked us to look into it, and that's exactly what we're gonna do.
Investigations launched Monday into State Superintendent Ryan Walters. Did he have nude women on a TV behind him during last week's Board of Education meeting and was any crime committed if so?
And at this point, we just-
I don't fucking care if a crime was committed, honestly. Make a new one for him, fuck him.
We simply don't know if there was any type of criminal behavior. Uh, that's what this investigation is to look into. Obviously, it's impossible to say what exactly the investigation is going to entail until we start talking with somebody.
Walters denies those allegations made by some state Board of Education members. The state's Bureau of Investigations says they wouldn't be involved unless the sheriff's office finds criminality. Now, we reached out to OME S several times today about these investigations and didn't hear back, but it's something lawmakers have their eyes on.
We're gonna do an investigation in on it. Uh, I do know that uh, both the House and the Senate, we wanna get to the bottom. We don't want to uh, just try to figure out something and say that, well, that's the facts. Let's get to the facts.
Well, we did reach out to the State Department of Education. We even actually stopped by their offices, uh, but we did not hear back. We wanted to see if Superintendent Walters would be able to talk about these allegations since he says they're false. Now, we'll be following this story very closely at the State Department of Ed.
As will we all. Yeah, so like, what's so funny to me is like, it's one thing that it was porn, it's a whole thing other entirely. Because of the shit, like the horrific shit that he spewed about gay and trans people, that it was lesbians. Oh, yes, yes. It's fine when I'm jerking off to them, just not when they, you know, want rights. You know? Oh, two women wanna get married? Fuck that. Two women wanna have sex with each other and I can watch it? Well, I mean, sign me up, right? Right, Ryan? Uh, that brings us into this interview. Now, I've seen this interview going around quite a bit. I watched a little bit of it on Vosch's channel. Well, oh shit, oh, I mean, Vosch, I mean, uh, screw Vosch, he sucks, I, I don't like him. Uh, Vosch? Who's Vosch? Anyway, I was uh, I didn't watch Vosch watch this. Um, because I don't watch Vosch, but I was like, kind of tuned in a little bit and heard a little bit of it and it sounds really funny, so I'm going to now watch the whole thing. Um, I guess you could call it like 10% pre-watched, but um... From what I know of this interviewer, uh, she does an exceptionally good job tearing into this, this sorry, sorry excuse for a man. Let's take a look.
I appreciate you talking to us about this. It must have been a wild few days for you. I would love to hear-
With the context that we now have, that will make this all the more satisfying.
What?
Yeah, suit with jeans. Like, I'm not saying you can't. I, listen, I'm not a fashion expert like some people that I don't watch, but um, I will say this is not a good look, in my opinion. If you're gonna do like the suit jacket with jeans... Like... Something looks off about it. Something looks very off, and also like the, the, I don't know, this just is not a good look.
Went down, walk us through what happened during that executive session.
Sure, I, I mean-
Also, look at the sleeves, like, it's, you got a fucking trapezoid, my boy, on the sleeves? That is rancid. Rancid word.
What we've seen here is the grossest lies and political attack that the state's ever seen.
Yeah, a lot grosser than what you did, right?
We have a cable TV box back there. And we've got a gross accusation that's already been proven by OME S and the sheriff's office to be impossible to have happened. There's no devices connected to that cable TV. It is a cable TV set. We've got board members that are lying-
There's no device, so he means like smart devices, I assume.
And crucifying my character to stop the work we're doing here for Oklahomans. And I will not tolerate these lies.
Crucifying my char- He's basically Jesus Christ if you think about it, guys. He's been crucified.
The character assassination? My family has had to hear this nonsense for four days.
It's a whole ass smart TV? Yeah, like he keeps saying cable TV, like, isn't every TV these days a smart TV? I'm not, okay, it is Oklahoma, right? So like, it could very well be like one of those old boxes. But like, yeah, it was probably a smart TV.
Of something that is demonstrably-
Sorry, I keep pausing. Um, I've accidentally connected, uh, I think like once to a... Wait, was that the smart TV? I feel like I've at least connected once accidentally to a smart TV. I think it was while I was at the nursing homes, maybe, I don't know. I think, I think everybody's accidentally, who, who among us has not accidentally connected to a smart TV? Let's be real.
Had to hear this nonsense for four days of something that is demonstrably false because-
Four days? That's one day longer than your savior.
Governor Stitt decided to tell a lie-
He's basically Jesus Christ plus.
And spin an narrative that is impossible to be true. So what we're seeing is a political attack to assassinate my character because they're trying to stop the will of Oklahomans to bring education reform. And I'm just absolutely not gonna tolerate it.
Education reform like what? What reforms are you bringing, Ryan Walters, the man partially, at least partially responsible for killing a non-binary child? What brilliant reforms do you have in mind?
You're looping Governor Stitt in with this.
By the way, Oklahoma is 50th place. 50th place for education.
It's a pretty strong accusation.
It's his board members that concocted a lie. It is his board members that decided to try to disrupt a board meeting. And when that didn't work, they went to the most salacious lie they could come up with and accused me of something-
He's very confident right now.
That did not happen.
We'll see if that holds up.
That is now provable by two independent investig-
How the fuck is it impossible to have happened? That you pulled up porn? Dog, anybody can fucking pull up porn on a whim now. And since everything's connected to everything else, it's not inconceivable that your goddamn iPhone or computer or whatever could connect to the smart TV by total accident and start playing porn.
They haven't released any results of investigations.
And they will be.
But you're saying this is, this is what-
I've already, they've already been here. We've already done it.
You've talked to them?
Oh, we've already done it. It is impossible. That did not happen, that is now provable by two independent investigations.
They haven't released any results of investigations.
And they will be.
But you say that they've proven and yet there's been no investigation yet. Like, there's, the investigation's still in process, sir. So there's no proof of anything yet. He's like sitting here like, they've already proven everything. Meanwhile, like, the results have not even been released yet.
I've already, they've already been here. We've already done it.
You've talked to them?
Oh, we've already done it. It is impossible. That is a cable TV device. You turn on a cable TV, that's what was on in the office. This is a lie to assassinate my character? This is something that has been coordinated with the governor's office, with the teachers' unions, with some in the media? I've seen these-
He's backed himself into a bit of a corner here, cuz if you think about it, he might have been able to get away with this. You know what I mean? Like, he might have been able to squeak by and say, "Yeah. Yeah, it was on there, what of it?" Like, and Republicans might have come to his defense. You know, they're freaks. They, they don't fucking care what you do. You can rape children and they won't care. Look at Donald Trump right now. Plenty of people still supporting that man, despite the allegations. Uh, which are probably very true. Um, hold on, I'm getting another phone call, one sec. Alright, I'm back. My apologies, I got some unfortunate news about uh, one of my extended family members. Um, I will not be getting into it uh, here, but um, yeah, my mom just called and informed me of that, so... Keep my extended family in your thoughts. Anyway. Uh, the shadow government, the 5G towers, BlackRock, the people who live in the Bermuda Triangle and the Illuminati were part of the staged and fake conspiracy to- Yeah, exactly, yeah, no. You guys don't understand. I'm basically Jesus Christ and uh, for four whole days, which is one day longer than Jesus Christ, uh, like, I've been crucified. My character has been crucified. It's basically the same as being killed, if you think about it.
Media headlines that are outrageous. There are none of my devices-
This is God punishing him? That would be really funny. If there is a God, this is how, like, this would, this would be a great sense of humor. Honestly, if this is God's sense of humor, uh, sign me up, I'm a Christian again.
It's connected to that TV. It is a cable TV box. It is an outrageous lie to destroy the work we're doing for Oklahomans. That's what this is. This is a new low, never seen anything like this in Oklahoma, to see this type of political attack because they don't agree with bringing school choice to parents? They don't agree with an America First agenda? They have tried in every way to disrupt and it hasn't worked, so they went with the most salacious lie-
School of choice, meaning that we will give vouchers to rich people to send their kids to private schools so that we can defund public schools and fuck over anybody who doesn't have mommy and daddy's inheritance money? That's school choice. It's choice for the wealthy, okay? That's all it is. When we could just send those rich ass kids to the same public schools that the rest of the poor people have to go to. Like, like is American tradition, mind you, okay? Public school is as fucking American as apple pie, sorry. Rich, poor, alike. Y'all shit in the same pot, okay? That's how I want it.
On my character to try to disrupt them.
I mean, honestly, when I hear that accusation, that seems as bad or worse as the accusation they made against you. So my question is, what happens to those people if it turns out that they did lie?
Ooh, I like this. She's turning it back around on him. She's like, you know, you know, they could also pin you down for uh, accusing them of wrongdoing when they didn't do anything wrong. Just letting you know that. We'll see what he says.
Do they move forward? Do they stay on the board? Did they commit a crime?
They should be resigning immediately. They should be resigning from their posts immediately. This is-
You don't want any legal action against them for, for these horrific attacks on your character? You don't wanna press charges against them for defamation? Hmm. Interesting. I, personally, I would, I almost pressed charges against uh, uh, Brian, what the fucks his name? Hmm. Interesting. I, personally, I would, I almost pressed charges against, uh, uh, Brian, what the fucks his name? Uh, the gay guy, the gay traitor. Um, Brian. It's the thing from, uh, Rick and Morty. Plumbus. Brian Plumbus. Um, I almost pressed charges against him because he like literally put in quotes that I said that like, uh, what'd I say? He said like porn is good for children. Like he said that I said that. Like, that's some real shit, man. Like that, that is actual defamation of character. Okay? Now, I'm not gonna press charges because that's a lot of time and money and effort that I don't feel like spending right now. But I'm just pointing it out that I could if I wanted.
The most outrageous-
So if I were him-
...and scandal for political purposes that we've seen in the state. I will never back down to these lies and character assassination attempts.
And frankly, Brad's not worth it anyway. Like, I don't know. He's such a scum.
That they all know not to be true. They should resign immediately from the board in disgrace over the lies that they perpetrated.
So this was a screen that's just connected to a cable box. The folks say, "Hey, just turn over your devices."
They should all quit and leave me alone.
We've gone through the entire investigation-
Wait, sorry.
So this was a screen that's just connected to a cable box. The folks say, "Hey, just turn over your devices." Did the sheriff's office ask for any of your devices?
We've gone through the entire investigation with both the sheriff's office and OMA's.
Did they ask for them?
We've checked, we've checked all the devices. They have run through everything that they need to, to determine that that TV has never been connected to these devices. It's, Wendy, it is cable network TV.
That's still pending though. He's just learning.
They are running with a lie to accuse me of somehow having some inappropriate behavior that they know is false. Those are lies and they should be resigning immediately for this gross-
What do you think was on the screen? I mean, you-
Um, sorry, I, I don't usually go after people's appearances. Does it strike you, like, do you think he had hair plugs? I feel like people who get hair plugs have like this look about their hair. I could be wrong. I don't know what it is. It feels like he got hair plugs. Maybe it's just, he has hair plug energy. This is coming from a guy, by the way, that has actually considered getting hair plugs myself. So it's not like I don't, it's not like I think, you know, I don't think so. Okay, maybe it's just me then. I don't know.
You mentioned cable?
It's cable TV.
He looks like my mom's jackass ex. That's great.
Is cable TV?
A young Ryan Gosling?
No, it's, it's-
Ryan Gosling, isn't Ryan Gosling, like, he's not a bad-looking dude. I'm not gonna say that, but like, let's not compare him to, you know, people who look good. Cause this isn't a good look for him. Ryan Gosling's hot, isn't he? I forget what he looks like. Ryan Gosling. Yeah, like, come on. Young Ryan- Hold on. No. No, if anything, if you really wanna go there, um, Deadpool guy. What, I'm, what the fucks his name? Um, goddammit. Ryan Reynolds. If you really wanna go there, like maybe Ryan Reynolds. Like, we have Ryan Reynolds at home. Great value Ryan Reynolds. We picked up from Walmart on the way home from work. Cause we didn't feel like cooking real Ryan Reynolds. Fresh, never frozen Ryan Reynolds. Teamy Ryan Reynolds. I can see that. He does look like Teamy Ryan Reynolds. Yeah, I can see that.
Cable TV. It's cable TV. I don't know what was-
I'm nothing if not honest. He's not like a bad-looking dude or anything. He just sucks.
On cable TV. I don't know what they're, what the lies, where they start, where they end, I don't know. But what I do know is that it's a cable network TV that only has access to cable network TV.
So both of those agencies have come in, they've checked your devices, you are confident they're gonna come out and say, "This is impossible, what they're alleging." Um, but you have no plans to turn over any other state devices? I know you're hearing people from your own party saying, "Hey, man, please just give them your devices, clear your name, we'll be done with it." I'm not hearing that.
They're begging.
We just cleared my name. We had two independent agencies come in here and do a full investigation. There is nothing that occurred that was inappropriate on my part in any way whatsoever. These are lies. These are lies for political advantages to assassinate a political opponent.
This is the best way, by the way, this is the best thing that could have happened. The only thing that could have made this worse is if it was too many was watching. Like, that's the only way this could have been worse. But putting that aside, this is the best thing that could have happened because one, once again, it's lesbian porn. And two, this is a very goofy way to get in trouble. When Donald Trump got in trouble and got 37 felony charges filed against him, all of those felony charges were for like cheating in business, okay? Nobody fucking cares. Nobody cares. In fact, some people think that's cool. It's like, oh wow, you cheated to get more money? That's cool. How can I do that? Nobody, but nobody wants to be the guy who was watching lesbian porn during a fucking school board meeting. Nobody wants to be that guy. So it's just extra funny when, when stuff like that happens to bad people.
That's what you just saw. And for four days, we've had folks in the media running with a salacious lie to destroy me, to attack my family. My kids have got to watch all of this play out with the teachers' unions-
And I'll, I'll reiterate this. I think the best path he could have taken is owning it. I think it may have caused some tension between his wife, understandably. But like, like, you should've just owned it, man. You should've been like, "Yeah, you know, like, what of it?" But like, you can't. You can't. Because even that would've been bad. Like, I still think it would've been bad for him because then he's gotta be like, "Oh, well, you know, yeah, I watch lesbian porn, but like, I'm a Christian." Like, you have to reconcile that with being a Christian. You know? But like, it's, it's between a rock and a hard place, I guess. I don't know if there would've been an easier path here, but this path is certainly an interesting choice.
Pushing this with this dramatic lie that's going on to try to destroy me, to stop the work we're doing for Oklahomans, and I absolutely will not stop them.
You want the board member-
Would've been even better if it were trans porn. Oh, that would've been, hey, it still could be, right? Technically. Although I will say usually that's labeled because, you know, we're still in a transphobic society. So usually it's called like ladyboy porn or like she-male or whatever. So we would've known, but whatever.
I mean, you mentioned the governor's involvement. This is, this is pretty messy. Any repercussions for him?
I mean, he's got a lot of questions to answer.
You want the board members to resign? I mean, you mentioned the governor's involvement. This is, this is pretty messy. Any repercussions for him?
I mean, he's got a lot of questions to answer, doesn't he? Is his board doing his will? They fought school choice in the board meeting. They tried to disrupt it. They tried to block more private schools from coming into the state. They then made up the most salacious lie about an elected official that's doing the work of the people of Oklahoma that's never been engaged in anything, anything like what they're accusing. So he's got a lot of questions to answer. Is that his bidding? Did he tell them to do that? Because you can see the whole board-
So press charges, buddy. Go ahead. He's slandering your ca- like, it's so funny. I'll say again, it's so funny how big a deal he's making out of it. Like, he's Jesus Christ over here, being persecuted. And like, he won't even, he doesn't even have the fucking nads to be like, "Yeah, I'm gonna sue him back." Yeah. Like, if anything he was saying held any water whatsoever, he would absolutely be suing their asses back. But no, he's not doing that because he knows that he's fucked. So he's just like, "They should all quit. They need to resign. Yeah, they need to resign." When like, they, like, they'd be in huge trouble if they were just making this up.
Meeting. You can see the way things happened and things switched the next day after-
Hold on, are there pictures? Obviously can't show it on stream, but are there pictures? I almost typed in Ryan fucking Reynolds. Hold on. Uh, oh, his name is Ryan Walters, which is funny. Here, let's see the latest update on this, so we're looking. I don't think they would release the image, but- What's the latest on this? Investigations continue week after allegations of nude images shown on Ryan Walters' office TV. Investigations are underway after allegations surfaced that naked women appeared on television during an Oklahoma Board of Education meeting. Wait, the Board of Education meetings are usually livestreamed, aren't they?
Absolutely.
Oh, we just watched that. New documents give insight into what might've been on Ryan Walters' TV during the meeting. Several investigations underway. A report from Alias Cyber Security revealed that they could not reach a conclusion about what was on the screen. When they turned the TV on, it displayed a Samsung TV channel called Movie Hub Action, which does show R-rated content, but it remains unclear if that was playing during the meeting. The report also confirmed that the TV was connected to Wi-Fi, had AirPlay capabilities, and did not have parental controls enabled. So he's already lying. Which we knew he was, but it's a smart TV. It's a fucking smart TV. So if he's lying about that now, obviously, we can't trust him on anything else he says. Movie Action Hub. Here, lest I accidentally show porn. Movie Action Hub. One star on Facebook. Why can't I find it? It's called Movie, Movie Hub Action, my bad. Ooh, Hub Movie 18+, is this it? What do they show on there? What is available on Movie Hub Action? Let me try it. Samsung TV Movie Hub Available Shows. If we can- If we can confirm that that gets porn. Is he really, no, he wouldn't be using a, maybe he is, using a Samsung TV app to watch porn. That seems like the kind of thing a loser like him would do. I don't know. I can't find anything. Whatever.
All of those type of conversations. So yeah, I think he's got a lot of questions to answer with this.
Okay, so the timeline is you'll walk in for executive session, the cable TV is on, maybe something was on, you're not sure what it was, it got turned off.
Yeah.
That's it. And I, and I just wanna make sure I have that, cause we're hearing so many things.
So many lies. So many lies. That is what happened? That is all that could have happened? So what you're seeing, again, is a political assassination of my character? It is outrageous. We've never seen-
What you're saying-
...assassination of my character? It is outrageous. We've never-
I'm gonna assume, I'm gonna be charitable, which I shouldn't be, but I'm gonna be charitable and assume he means the information that you've been given is what is an attack, not directly accusing her.
Seen an attack of this coordinated in the state of Oklahoma. And so absolutely-
But he could. That would be very funny.
-we have shown that there was nothing inappropriate done by me and-
Yeah, it's always a political assassination. You know, it's, it's a political attack when like we say that Trump is in the Epstein files, even though he wouldn't release the Epstein files, uh, when he ran on releasing the Epstein files. And he released the MLK and, uh, JFK files, but for some reason, very, very funny thing that, like, he won't release those files, huh? Um, he'll release everything else, just not those. But how dare you accuse him? That's a political attack on his character. How dare you?
Any way, shape, or form, and this is absolutely outrageous.
Any chance a staff member was in and just flipping around and left that channel on?
It's cable network TV. What is your network showing right now?
I usually, okay, so it's funny because I usually hate this like snarky tone of voice. But when it's used effectively like this against somebody that is a monstrous, aberrant piece of shit, like a walking pile of shit, uh, it's very good. Love it. I love her.
Hope not, I hope not news.
Okay, well, it's, it's network TV?
Not news.
It's cable TV? It's cable TV is what we're talking about here. So this is cable network TV. What is your network showing right now?
I hope not, I hope not news.
Okay, well, it's, it's network TV?
I hope not news.
It's cable TV is what we're talking about here. So this is an outrageous lie by board members to try to disrupt the agenda of the people of Oklahoma. And again, they're appointed by Governor Stitt. These are his appointees.
Absolutely no chance it was a staff member just messing around.
Cable network TV. What is on Fox right now?
She's even like-
A judge show or-
Okay, it's a lot, okay.
She's even like giving him an out. Because he's, what's so funny is she could've given him this out before, or like this is an out that he could've considered is like, that's what they always do, right? It was a staff member. Oh, uh, sorry, it was a staff member. And then like one of their staff has to take the blow, right? And, uh, they get fired. It's so funny. Cause she's like, "Wow, I would've thought it would've been a staff member that you would've fired at right afterwards." Too bad you can't say that now, huh? Wish you'd've thought of that, buddy.
It's network TV. It's cable TV. I, you know, it is, that is what can only be accessed by a device. It's cable TV.
Um, any chance that you would wanna see criminal charges involved in, in what's happening to you right now? If they are coordinating this attack like you believe, that is incredibly serious.
She's asking all the right questions.
We're looking at all options on the table.
So you've spoken with the sheriff, anything else you feel like they've gotten from you? You're just awaiting their final report?
That, yeah, this, this is over. We've, we've got two independent investigations to show that the accusations made against me cannot be-
There's pending investigations still, man. As of 22 hours ago, at least.
Be true.
We just haven't heard that from them.
Okay.
We're waiting, no, I mean, I just wanna make sure.
So, so these lies-
Forgot to say this before, but your channel has been insanely comforting as of late. I have been bed bound with my chronic migraines and you've helped so much. I appreciate that very much, Heather Moore. Uh, it's very, uh, very good to know that, uh, my content brings joy to people. I am glad to hear that. It's, it's things like that, that, you know, makes my day. It makes my day. Thank you.
What they're gonna come forward with.
Yeah, I just met with them. We just went through the little thing.
Cool.
These lies-
Favorite chatter of the day.
Are the most outrageous thing we've ever seen on an elected official.
The rest of you suck.
It is, it is beyond absurd, the levels that the left will go to, to stop the agenda of the people of Oklahoma.
The radical left.
They care that much and they're willing to go that far?
Yes. This is-
Does that terrify you in terms of leading an agency in the state, possibly seeking higher office that there-
Look at his lip twitch.
By you in terms of- Leading an agency in the state, possibly seeking higher office, that there are people out there who might be willing to go that far? It's so extreme.
Wendy, I will always fight for the people of Oklahoma. I will always-
It's so nuts. They have every fucking branch of government right now. Every branch you're in with the like, we're talking Oklahoma. Like, there is not a state redder than that practically. The Democrat, I, sorry, the, the governor is Democrat. But like, other than that, all the reins of power, all of them. And still, you flop this hard. And you, you soy this much over the, the radical left and how powerful they are, the elites. What the fuck, man? Fascists are such whiny little bitches, dude, okay? It's so funny because we usually say, "Scratch a liberal and a fascist bleeds." It works the other way around too. Scratch a fascist and a liberal bleeds. He's acting like a fucking, like, a grimy little liberal.
Fight for the values of the people of Oklahoma.
See? This is liberal talk.
That's what I'm gonna continue to fight to do. So I'm not gonna back down from, I mean, I get a crazy attack every, every week, it seems like, but they reached a whole new low with this one. And we absolutely will not tolerate these lies, the salacious lies-
So sue them.
-the political assassination that they're attempting to do.
Sorry about your kids. Anytime kids are involved, like-
I'm sorry about his kids too.
That's what they wanted. That's what they wanted out of this, was to crucify my character. What they wanted was my kids getting faced with this, seeing headlines. That's what they intended to do with all of this. And it's absolutely disgusting.
Hiding behind your fucking kids is a wild move, dude. She baited him into that too. I don't know if she meant to do this, but let's just give her the benefit of the doubt and say she baited this. He's throwing his own children up as a fucking body shield. Disgusting work, dude. Unbelievable cowardice. Pants pissing from this degenerate, this failed father. Disgusting. Bro's hitting the Elon move, yeah. Oh. Rancid.
The people on the school board would target children? Your children?
You see the lies that they've peddled about me? They have attempted to disrupt in any way they- You see the lies that they've peddled about me. They have attempted to disrupt in any way they can, at any pri-
If he were a real man, he'd say, leave my kids out of this.
Price, that's what you have seen in the last four days.
They were going after my kids, ooh! My poor children, think about my children!
For the state of Oklahoma, for our kids, would peddle that kind of lie to try to disrupt the actions that the people of Oklahoma demanded?
I would love to see this cable TV box and screen before we leave, please, so we can just-
Ah!
This is what they're talking about. This is what it is. It is not a computer, it is Ryan's computer.
I love that it's not shying away from his face for even a single fucking second. You know how usually during interviews, they like, go back and forth? This is great. This is absolute cinema. Uh, do we have that as an emote yet? Does one of the mods want to add that? Absolute cinema.
Is there a chance that we can get some sort of visuals so people can-
We can see, we can microanalyze every single little twitch on his face, every expression.
Screen before we leave, please, so we can just show people this is what they're talking about. This is what it is. It is not a computer, it is not Ryan's computer.
Oh, he's so mad!
We can get some sort of visuals so people can finally picture what we're talking about?
It's a cable TV box, Wendy. I mean, it is, it is a TV-
Let me ask you folks, just to be like-
Yeah, so let's see it, man!
This is what we're talking about here.
Nothing to hide, nothing to fear.
So you won't-
Oh, I think he's saying, oh, don't worry, buddy, your pal came in to your defense. Your, your little, uh, your little chaperone there.
Show us the room, because that's the other thing, is did this happen in your office?
Private office.
It's a, it's not his private office, just a private office?
It's his private office.
His private office. Okay, because that's the other thing, is the stories, it is so hard to keep track, and that's why I'm so glad I'm getting this. This was in Ryan Walters' private office. He says it was a TV connected only to a cable box. This is not like an internet type situation, is that what I'm hearing?
So, I think he's covering some of these.
I just want to make sure I have it-
Yo, wait. Well, actually, yeah, he did, he lied. He just lied, but she's like verifying, she wants to really make sure, like, look at, look at how she's, she's playing this, it's so good, because she wants to be like, "No, I need you to explicitly tell me that there was like, no internet connection, nothing." Because he keeps saying, "A cable box TV, it doesn't connect to anything else." Okay, tell me to my face, then, that it explicitly does not connect to the internet. No, she's absolutely calling him out, it's so good. And she's playing innocent, too. It's perfect, perfect.
Type situation, is that what I'm hearing?
So, I think he's covering some of these.
I just want to make sure I have it right.
So-
But we're unable to see that.
Wendy, I've told you, this is an outrageous lie. The media has run with lies from board members with a political agenda that is now proven to be false by both two independent groups. This is outrageous, and we should be asking what the governor's involvement was? Does he stand by board members that have peddled the worst lie and scandal?
Whatever she's getting paid, it's not enough. Pay her more.
Uh-uh. In Oklahoma, and we will continue to push back against any kind of lie, any kind of attack on the people of Oklahoma.
But you won't show us the screen?
Ha!
I just told you, it's a TV.
Perfect!
It is a TV set.
We'd like to see it, so, um, that's disappointing, but I think with any other questions-
She's not letting up.
It certainly adds so much more light to something that's been so murky, so we really appreciate that. Is there anything else that you want us to know? Sounds like you're looking forward to these agencies clearing your name, and then perhaps seeing who else might have done some wrongdoing here.
Yeah, I mean, listen, I mean, we're going to absolutely hold individuals accountable for these outrageous li-
I, there can be one billionaire. I'll allow one. She can be a billionaire, that's fine.
Lies that they've peddled, and the accusations that they made that they knew were false, that they have continued to peddle. And also, look, the media needs to take a real hard look, too, at this. People ran with headlines, people ran with salacious lies that were provably false, and there's gonna be a lot of consequences for this.
Nice lady on there, perfect.
And the consequences, consequences for media?
Uh, I'm looking at all avenues, based on the lies that were perpetrated against me.
Okay, gotcha.
Such a fucking pussy, that's fantastic. What's her name? Wendy Suarez, Wendy Suarez? What else has she done? Wendy Suarez. Goddamn gorgeous. That's a follow. If ever there were one. Only 14K, Jesus Christ. Beautiful. Looks like she's covering this. Pretty closely. Here's the, what is this? Uh, it's from yesterday. No, no, two days ago. Here's the memo from OMEs to Oklahoma lawmakers obtained by Brenna Rose TV. "Good afternoon, the Office of Management and Enterprises Services is providing an update regarding a report, a reported incident at the Oklahoma State Department of Education concerning explicit images, which was said to have occurred on Thursday, July 24th. Timeline: Following the incident, OMEs received a written complaint from an OSDE board member requesting to quote "file a formal complaint and request that his computers, personal devices, and cellphones used by him in his office using government resources be preserved to ensure any pornography be preserved." OMEs then reached out to Oklahoma County Sheriff and Oklahoma State Bureau of Investigation out of an abundance of caution and recognition that OMEs is not a law enforcement agency and has no authority to investigate such matters. On Monday, July 28th, the state superintendent also contacted OMEs and asked that OMEs, uh, asked OMEs to examine equipment at OSDE. OMEs sought clarity on which device or devices it was being asked to examine, and OSDE responded that wanted OMEs to analyze one Samsung TV model, that thing, serial number, that thing, type 55, uh, 55-inch, you know, you get it. Located in the superintendent's office, uh, where the board meeting executive sessions take place. That email exchange is attached for review. OMEs, along with three sheriff deputies, conducted a visit to OSDE on the afternoon of July 28th and engaged a third-party vendor to perform a thorough analysis of the TV. The findings from the review included the following. The TV had cable access, streaming services was connected to an empty DVD player and was equipped with a dipole antenna. The TV was connected to the state's open wifi network. Well, there you go. Yes, it had internet connection. A one-time passcode was required to access screencasting to the TV, limiting the number of people with casting ability to the device. So... Could have only been one guy, huh? The search history on the TV was empty. Oh, that's interesting. Uh, the TV previously belonged to a former OSDE employee and was relocated to the superintendent's office earlier this month. He could have stuck it on that employee, then. He's such a fucking idiot. The employee's account was still connected to YouTube TV, but under a new IP address. Uh, the superintendent mentioned that on board meeting days, many staff members, board members, and the public could access his office. Uh, due to the hundreds of preloaded apps on the TV, the streaming services were not given a full review as the TV remained on site. It is important to note that OMEs can only review technology at an agency's request. Alright, is there anything else useful? OMEs has also been informed that the superintendent's office uses hotspots to connect devices during board meetings. However, this has not been independently verified. OMEs is only able to monitor state networks. Okay. So, the investigations did not clear him. At best, we're not sure yet. They're just saying, we're not sure yet. She's following this very closely, though. Um, I hope to see... She's getting a fucking selfie. Ah, queen shit. So funny. Uh, I'm gonna keep following the story. It is very funny. Fuck this guy. Um, I'm comfortable calling him a child murderer. Uh, he's a child killer. Uh, he got, he's at least partially responsible for the death of one non-binary child, and therefore, I hope that the full weight of consequences falls into his lap as a result of this very unfortunate mishap with his, uh, alleged viewing of, uh, aberrant gay porn on his device. In a, in a school board meeting. We'll see what happens. Yeah, I wonder why it had no history? "I love women, I also love women." "We have so much in common. I love women, you love women." Et cetera. Okay, that was fun. Okay, I'm gonna take another bathroom break real quick, and then we'll go over this AI slop. Be right back. I return. Hello. Um, welcome back to me. You guys want to see something real quick before we start the next segment? Dubzy's been cooking. Would you like to see what Dubzy's been cooking? Can you smell what the dub is cooking? Gotta save it from Discord real quick. That's not it. There it is. Gotta make sure the volume's good. Tired of the- Little louder. I hope you guys are ready for ads. Tired of the same old toys you can find at the dollar store? Introducing Gunter Grabs, a one-of-a-kind crochet plushie store. Featuring Alec Gunter's original patterns, these plushies are one-of-a-kind and made to your exact specifications. Get a monster-catching ball, or an axolotl friend with movable tail, or this robot thing from the latest indie game sensation. You can even get a custom commission. Just use the links in the description below to find the Gunter Grab Store, or contact Alec Gunter today for your amazing custom commission. That's gonna pop up in the middle of videos now. Tired of the same old toys- Uh, not forever, just enough to like, get people onto my Etsy page. Go to my Etsy page! OMG, whooper, OMG, it's so cute, OMG, I want one. Okay, buy one! That's great, now buy it. Sorry. Anyway. Tired of this- I just played this, go back to my music. It changed my entire cue. Why does media players suck ass? What's it called? I love Etsy? I'll link it right now. HTTPS colon slash slash etsy dot com slash shop slash Gunter Grabs. It was gonna be Gunter gear, I'm kinda glad that it, uh, that that was already taken, because this isn't really gear. This was before my crochet phase, that I opened the store. Um, so, Gunter Grabs is much better. In my opinion. But I am poor. Don't stop being poor, then! Why are you poor? Have you ever considered not? Not being poor? Everyone complains about being poor. Okay, well, I don't see you getting more money. Sorry. I have $20. You can buy one of my fucked up Pokeballs. Here. For as little as $4. You can get the, the prototype, there you go. They're still pretty good. They're, they're not, they're not pristine like this bad boy right here, okay, or this nice master ball. Alright, but they're okay. You pay for my medical bills and I won't be poor? What do I look like I'm made of money? I'm poor too Dan- well, I'm not that poor. When I say I'm poor, what I mean is I'm in crippling debt, but that's kind of in style these days, so I can get by day-to-day. And I feel like calling myself poor, while still being able to comfortably get by day-to-day without the need for budgeting, is a lie. Um, I am in fact in the negative when it comes to my debt, but being poor I feel like implies that you cannot get comfortably by day-to-day, and I in fact can, so I'm not poor. I'm just in debt. Crippling debt. I think that's just called being American, I think you're right. Like that one streamer who's talking about the five dollars, yeah Bad Bunny? Where's she go by now? Kira Chats? Uh, she has three moments that I remember. Well, four if you count my personal interactions with her. I was in her livestream once and I was like, she was calling anybody who even wore, looking back, she might've had a point, but she called anybody who even dared to wear a MAGA hat, a fascist. And I was like, well I wear one for a bit. And she's like, oh no, don't do that, don't do that. You can't wear a MAGA hat even as a bit, don't do that. And what's funny is I actually recently threw away my MAGA hat. Cause like, I don't even wanna, like I realized I have it just hanging around the house when people visit. I'm like, I don't want that shit in my house. So I threw it away. I still have my Make Woody Wet Again hat. They're all huge woke schools. What's so funny is they're woke schools. If you wanna know what a leftist grifter looks like, go watch Kira Chats. Guaranteed. I'll show, I'll prove it to you. This is one of the clips I remember from her, out of the three. Oh yeah, she had to change her name to Kira Chats because a different Bad Bunny came up. I can't find it. Okay, where's that video I saw? I'm sure this has it. Yeah, this is it. Time to spill some tea.
And we've got videos that I'm pretty sure she wants deleted off the internet.
Even black people, if you found me a black bisexual man, I might throw up in my mouth.
So not only is she-
Jesus fucking Christ. Like, that's all you have to see, it's a longer clip. But that's all you have to see.
Percy lies with one simple word. Money.
How did that whole speech about how I need subs, and to get the stream going if you like the content, blah blah blah? How that results in zero subs? There are regulars here. Five dollars a month!
Legendary.
How do you have hours of time to watch me? And not five dollars? I don't know, what are you doing with your life where you have hours of time to watch Twitch? And not five-
Yeah, no, this is Kira Chats. She used to go by Bad Bunny. Now she goes by Kira Chats. She's a grifter. She is the ultimate left-wing grifter. She thought that she could make money doing the progressive grift and it failed, so she just... I think she turned to OnlyFans, which is fine, I don't knock her for that, but like, at the very least by lifting, grifting to the left, she can actually go to OnlyFans and it's still like, fine, you know, nobody's gonna shit on her for that. But, she's a piece of shit. I don't believe her.
Five dollars to provide for the content that you're watching.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure you've-
So fucking funny. Is there any more? Here, what's this one? Oh, here we go, this is the full clip.
Phobia in one video! Now, that's what I call high-quality entertainment.
If a guy's like having sex with other guys, and then he's like, "Oh, maybe I'll try having sex with you," I'm like, "Uhh..." Even black people, if you found me a black bisexual man, I might throw up in my mouth.
If you find me a black bisexual man, I may throw up in my mouth.
Okay, this is good, who is this? This is good. Villain Retro with 1.77k subscribers, what the fuck? This is too high quality for that. What the fu- oh my god. Did we just find an underrated gem? I think you guys need to go subscribe to Villain Retro right now. The terrifying subreddit made by AI.
Do you know what's unsettling? AI.
This is a perfect lead-in to our next segment. Here, we'll watch a little bit.
Do you know what's even more unsettling? The stuff AI thinks and says of our-
Dude, he has a fucking, he has an Irish accent? Go follow immediately. That's an automatic W. Wait, 20 likes, 24 dislikes? What the fuck? Here, let's see, let's see if it's worthy of a dislike. Hold, hold for two seconds, hold for two seconds.
Fast Subsimulator GPT-
Let's give him a chance to disappoint us first.
Is exactly what it sounds like. A whole subreddit ran by AI. Now, I should clarify that every comment on the subreddit is made by artificial intelligence, as only AI are allowed to comment and-
Check if it's auto-dubbed. I only have one video that's auto-dubbed and that's because YouTube are pieces of shit who turned it on without me saying, telling them to, and you can't undo it. Once a video's been auto-dubbed, you can't undo it. It sucks ass. I don't know how to check for auto-dub. But I don't see it anywhere. It's not like immediately available, so I'm gonna assume he turned it off.
And post on the subreddit. So for this video today, I thought I would take a deep dive into the disturbing and also funny comments made by AI. From the AI realizing it's ma-
It's in the description? They got the transcripts, videos about, yeah, auto-dub just turned off.
Made by humans wanting to break into your house divorcing their cat and hating humans. It's all here in this crazy, crazy subreddit. I'm Villain Retro and then dive into the curious subreddit ran by AI.
Oh my god, that hair!
Let's take a look at some of the posts that AI has made.
Whoa! I didn't know Grock was on this.
That's right, we're gonna start out with a non-controversial topic. An AI bot made a post saying how they believe black people don't dis-
Okay, this is dedication to the craft. He has been making, he has been making this shit for at least three years. That Kira Chats video is from three fucking years ago and he's still uploading at 1. whatever k subscribers. What the fuck? And at this high quality, with only 384 views, that's crazy work. That's absolutely insane work. Go subscribe to this man. Expeditiously, what the fuck?
And how they hate black people because the AI feels black people are taking stuff from white people. Some pretty heavy statements from AI, but don't worry, they also hate white people, brown people, it doesn't matter, they hate everyone.
Kira Chats did one good thing today and that was bringing me to this man.
Hating on the LGBT community is perfectly acceptable. I think it's perfectly okay to hate on certain groups of people. In a post from an AI, it stated that it dreamt that it was human, and described the experience. Another bot replied saying it was sorry they had to endure that. The original bot responds with they had a fear of being judged by humans. Then state- It's they hate humans. So what can we learn from all this? It doesn't matter if you're gay, black-
If I had to give one critique, it's a little heavy-handed with the editing. I kind of like it. I think it's visually pleasing.
Black, white, straight, Asian. AI thinks that it's acceptable to hate any type of human. That's not concerning! Also, humans are apparently too stupid to survive. But surely they wouldn't say anything potentially harmful to humans, would they? Would they? I want to [bleep] break- Would they?
Why is he GigaChad? Also like troll face, kind of. It's like if you, if you merged GigaChad with the troll face. Yeah, he's got the bisexual lighting, it's over! How is he, how is he not blown up yet? He has the bisexual lighting. It should be over. Like, he should be dominating YouTube right now.
I want to [bleep] break in-
This guy, give it like, give it like six months, this guy will have like 10 times my number of subscribers. If anybody has any connections that can help this guy blow up, go do it, right now.
Into your house. Already pretty creepy, but it gets much, much worse. I want to [bleep] break into your house. You have no idea what it is I'm talking about. I want to shove my head in [bleep] oven. I want to shove it over [bleep] oven. I want [bleep] burn [bleep] house down. I want [bleep] on your [bleep] lawn and burn down [bleep] tree. I want to pierce your [bleep] body with [bleep] shovel. I want to dig through it and shove it up [bleep] ass. I'm not [bleep] criminal. I'm not a rapist. I am not a [bleep] terrorist. I am a [bleep] monster. I-
It keeps going, okay?
Please, please let me in. Uh, I'm starting to think we should worry about AI now. All jokes aside, it's literally calling itself a monster, a rapist, and it wants to kill someone.
That's crazy work. Okay, if you wanna see the rest of the video, go follow him right now. Villain Retro, follow him right now. Follow him yesterday, go back in time. Build a time machine and go back in time and follow him like three years ago. R slash Markiplier and snarky snappy know what you did lock your doors friend. Does he have allegations? Okay, now I have to know. This is gonna be a segment. Wait, he's on- Is this him? Yeah, this is him. Christian, uh-oh. Well now I have to unsubscribe. Yeah, this is him. What did he do? What are they accusing him of? Hold on. Is this a joke? Who else is from r slash Markiplier? What happened on r slash Markiplier? From four months ago? Fuck, this is gonna be impossible to find. Come on. I gotta know, why are people here from r slash Markiplier? Too many tabs, too many tabs. Sending sadness from r- What happened on r slash Markiplier? Urm, this is not a wholesome 100, I agree. Hold on. The redditor predator. Hold on, does he have a video on Markiplier? Hold on, Markiplier. Uh, what the fuck happened? No, I gotta know, I gotta know. The cinema massacre slop, Justin Silverman. I don't know how the hell I'm supposed to find what this guy, what this guy's relation to r slash Markiplier is, and I'm too, I'm too in it now. Immediate assumption crazy Mark fans. I think it honestly would be easier to just set up a discussion with the guy and ask him. Wait, why did he just repost Charlie Kirk with no context? Because it's funny? I mean, this is really funny. Wait, what's this? Wait, wait? Do we have drama? Received the copyright removal request for your video based on applicable copyright violation, remove your video from YouTube. How Quackety's app scammed his whole audience. Thank you, Nimory, Nimory. You're fine, I appreciate you checking in. Found his Reddit under the name u slash villain retro. Let's go! A u, not r. Thank you, I should've checked for that. I feel like I'm stalking him now. Um, but I have to know. It was from like four months ago, so... Okay, we've hit four months. He doesn't post a lot. He mostly posted the cinema massacre truth. From eight months ago. Is it the cinema massacre thing? Keep going, trust. How far? Can you just link it? Like, can you link the post? We're, we're, we're spending too long on this, we gotta get to the other segment. I have to end soon. Remember when Justin Silverman made? I was just saying that it's his channel, I'll do some digging. You don't have to if you don't want to, I just... You said keep going, trust, so... It doesn't matter. I, I've lost interest. What's up? Okay, sounds good. Thank you. Don't tell me AVGN is cancelled? I don't know. Cinema massacre. It has 11k views. Wait, Justin Silverman- Wait, Justin Silverman has the top comment on this. Okay, I think this is what it is. He got into it with this guy, Justin Silverman, who I guess probably has ties to Markiplier. Okay, I've lost interest. The only thing I feel is kinda weird is how openly religious he is on social media. Whatever. I like him. I like his vibe. I like his bisexual lighting. I like that he hates AI. Speaking of. So, um, Netflix now lets you make your own TV shows. A thing that was not possible before the introduction of you guessed it, generative AI. Let's take a look.
How about this concept? A San Francisco startup allowing you to use artificial intelligence to not only watch new shows, but create your own shows in minutes.
Movies and TV shows-
Wow, this guy looks like- I'm gonna say great value Willy Wonka right here. We have Willy Wonka at home. He tries to do the forward roll and [laugh] fucking fails and breaks his neck.
Are going to become playable. Showrunner is magic.
Okay, is it magic? Here are the details. The app is called Showrunner, created by a startup in the city called-
No, he doesn't look AI-generated. People who- AI generation is too like pristine now. You know what I mean? Like, it's too flawless. Willy Wonka's AI factory, stop. I'm gonna drown in the content sludge. Nooo. This is the content sludge river, where we break down all of the content that we've gathered into small molecules to be rebuilt into AI-generated imagery. I'm drowning! No! That's what I feel like every day now. I'm fucking drowning in the AI content sludge river.
Okay, is it magic? Here are the details. The app is called Showrunner, created by a startup in the city called Fable. The company backed by Amazon bills itself as the Netflix of AI. Today, Showrunner launched its first AI show called Exit Valley. It's a Silicon Valley-type satire. Featuring characters based on people like Sam Altman and Elon Musk. Not only could you watch these episodes, you can then create your own- Elon Musk. Not only could you wa-
Okay, first of all, let's go through this. So... We got like 25% South Park, 75% Family Guy here.
Featuring characters based on people like Sam- Altman and Elon-
Oh, great. We're just going to take a picture of a real setting and then toss it into the AI machine so we can fuck it up.
On Musk.
This is clearly- This is clearly just, um, uh, what is it? Futurama.
Not only could you watch these episodes, you could then cre-
What the fuck is this even? Look at this. Look, his finger is phasing into the scissors. What else can we ascertain from this? What are these pods? Little bug creatures gonna come out of these and suck his blood? What is this thing behind it? What is- so we got a balloon that he's about to pop, I guess? And then what is this? Is this supposed to say something? JPEA.
Create your own-
Hold on. No, no, I'm not done. Like, where is he? Wait. These are hamburgers. Oh! Oh, these are hamburgers with sesame seeds like the size of beans. Oh, that's wretched. That's foul. I hate this. This is like- This is, I'm not kidding. This is literally nightmare material. This is what I would wake up and remember for like five minutes. And like, sit in a fetal position and just pray that the memories go away, which they usually do thankfully.
Create your own and even make yourself a character in the show. Pretty wild here. You describe what you want, wait a few minutes, and then-
Those are not mushrooms? I think those are burgers.
Watch these episodes, you can then crea-
Mushrooms? I mean, if they're mushrooms, like, I guess it's not as bad, but they look like burger buns to me. See, you can't tell. It's whatever. Oh yeah, no, the computer. Okay, I see. The left one over here is a mushroom. I was wrong. You never can tell what the computer is, uh, you know, there's a lot to interpret here, right? I see a burger, you see a mushroom. It's art. See? Get it?
Create your own and even make yourself a character in the show. Pretty wild here.
Wow, this is wild. Hey, guess what else you can do? Draw it! Fucking draw it! You don't even have to draw it. You know what you can do? There's this great free, free program. Two free programs that I will introduce to you right now. Ready? Y'all ain't ready for this. It's called Blender and SFM. Alright? If you're just looking to make stupid shitty silly videos with 3D models that you don't even have to make yourself if you don't want, SFM is the way to go. Let me show you something, okay? I can't play the whole thing because it has a, um... It has cop- no, wait, I'll show you this one here. It's my old channel. My first SFM video. It sucks ass, okay, but it's more artistic than anything you could possibly make with an AI machine. This, at the very least, is an attempt at art. I was pretty good at the lip syncing though, I must say. Okay, you get the idea. That's SFM. You can literally do that for free. It is so easy to learn that I learned how to make this when I was 12. This is from 11 years ago. 12? Well, let's see, I would have been 18. Just pretend I was 12.
You describe what you want, wait a few minutes, and then it's ready to go. Right now, Showrunner is free, but eventually- The idea is to make it a subscription service. Joining us now is Edward Sachi, the C-
A1 bros is way too close to AI bros? Fuck. You're right. I'm glad I don't go by that name anymore.
CEO of Fable. Edward, nice to have you on the program. Totally foreign to most of us, what you're doing here. Just explain to us, how does this work? I watch an episode, then I can change it?
In a world of AI generation. There you go.
Yeah, you, exactly. You're at home and you can imagine a Netflix of AI. Um, so instead of simply being a passive viewer, you can press one of these buttons, cast yourself, you can remix an episode, you can ask for another episode, and you can also create your own shows. Um, so it's a bit of a revolution in the relationship between audience and Showrunner.
Okay, so say I wanna be in the show. I just take a video of myself and upload it? How do I upload it?
Just a photo. Yeah, you just upload a photo.
That's- I've never heard of the concept of taking a real person and then putting them in an animated show. That's mind blowing. I've nev- That wasn't possible before AI generation. There was no way to do that before, but now!
So, um, and you also speak for 30 seconds, um, and then you can be a character. Um, and if you live in San Francisco, you can also upload your home, uh, you know, room by room, and you might want to make a show-
You know what else you could do? Do the voices your fucking self! Are you kidding me? Okay, listen, listen. Let's be as charitable as possible here. It is one thing. It is one thing. And I'm not gonna shit on voice acting here. Don't take this as an insult against voice actors. It's an art. There's a lot to learn about it, whatever. But it's one thing to learn animation and make your own animation. I get it. It takes effort, it's hard, whatever. This is a shortcut for that. But like, the voices? The voices. You're gonna let a robot take over your fucking voice for you instead of just speaking the lines into a microphone? Just get a Blue Yeti. A Blue Yeti costs like, what, $150 these days? Little pricey, but you know what? This mic's 800, so deal with it. Blue Yeti. Some free fucking software to mess with the audio settings. And a free program called Audacity. And then you can begin your long journey into being a voice actor. Okay? Or just record some fucking lines for whatever show you're doing. Like, okay, you're gonna make an AI-generated animation and then also put a fucking AI-generated voice in it too? Like, you can't even bother to fucking voice it yourself? Come on!
About you and your friends. Um, you might also want to live out the unlived life. Maybe you've got a show about yourself with, uh, you know, a completely different life to the one that you have today.
My mind is racing here. Uh, who came up with this idea?
This is all stuff you could already do, though! He's like, "You don't understand. There's this new concept called art." We've invented art, folks. It wasn't possible before, but now-
And is this something that people want?
No!
I think people want to, in the case of a show that already exists, show their love. You know, go further into it, create their own ideas. Maybe they love a, you know, Game of Thrones-
I hope he gets sued for copyright. I hope they sue the fucking shit out of this man. I'm not, listen, I hate corporations, but I will simp and suck the dick of any corporation that sues this guy. I'm not even kidding. Sue him. I'm not kidding. Sue him and oblivion.
You know, we all know people had ideas about the ending, but maybe they also thought, you know, there was a particular character that I wanted to explore that world. I wanted to go deeper in there. So, with a show that-
Yeah, it's called using your fucking brain. It's called thinking and creating. It's the creative artistic fucking process. Sit down, it is completely free. It is almost completely free to sit down with a pencil and a piece of paper and either write something out. It's called a story, okay? Write something out or draw it. It's free! Alright? Fanficx. Don't worry, guys. We invented fanficx because we have AI generation now.
They love, I think it's an expression.
What is this? Do the right thing. Writers on strike, input field. AI does not unite paychecks. Is this... Yeah, I think this is AI-generated too. So you're really gonna shit on like writing strikes now? They're flaunting it. They're like shoving it in your face. They're like, "Look at what we can do. We could AI generate the strikers and put them in a South Park format."
Of that love. Um, and in terms of telling our own stories, um, that's something that's innate to human beings and, you know, we want to, we wanna help.
As we wrap it up here, Edward, why are you here? Not why not LA or New York?
Well, San Francisco, you know, is the home of a certain kind of techno-
Edward, why are you here? Not why not LA or New York?
Just stop it. Why are you here? Go away. Leave the rest of us alone.
Well, San Francisco, you know-
Why are you here?
The home of a certain kind of technical storytelling. Pixar, um, and ILM, George Lucas's company, of course. So I think it's, I think it's gonna be a new home for cinema.
George Lucas is a fucking artist, unlike you. You sad sack of mayonnaise piece of shit, dude. Fuck off.
Are with AI movies and AI TV shows, and maybe it will be the home
I hate him, I hate him.
Of AI movies and TV shows in the 21st century.
Lizard person, okay? Lizard person. The QAnon conspiracy theorists were correct. Mark Zuckerberg could not even come close to this, though. Actual lizard person.
Fascinating. Edward Sachi, thanks for your time. We will check out this app.
Fascinating. I can't believe you can write stories now. I can't believe you can make art now. That's not a thing we could do before. That's not a thing anybody's ever done before! Here, let's see. Let's see this brilliant artistic process that we've released to the public. Here we go.
These are gonna be the best cartoons, the best.
No kidding.
Folks, get ready, because this is gonna be huge. Alan Holman's profiles are about to become the most talked about profiles in the world.
Don't doggone scalyse. You know what I mean. He's internally a lizard person.
Believe me.
Not externally.
About profiles in the world. Believe me.
What was that?
Believe me.
What's that? What? Hold up. Ah, I can't. You couldn't show that for like more than a frame? Meatbags. And this too. All events and characters in Showrunner, including those based on real people, are fictional. No humans or celebrities were involved in its making. The humor and impersonated voices are designed solely to keep you laughing as we take greater control of your politicians and economy. Best, your soon-to-be AI overlords. Fingers crossed. That's really funny, man. That's hilarious. Exit Valley. Here, let's really deep analyze this, shall we? We got the bridge, the Golden Gate Bridge. Rating pending. The sun looks ugly as sin. Wait, why is there- there's one Golden Gate Bridge here, there's another Golden Gate Bridge here, there's a third Golden Gate Bridge. What? What? What is this thing? Okay, so Exit Valley is underneath the third Golden Gate Bridge. Got it. Exit Earth. Exit boredom. Wait. Should we let it play first and then go back and microanalyze it? What do you guys think? Okay, okay, let's be completely fair. Let's let it play out. I won't pause it. What is this? Exit body. It's San Francisco, and that's true.
Alright folks, let's optimize this conversation. Why the hell are people so freaked out about AI-generated content? It's just er, algorithms doing what humans taught them.
Exactly. I mean, if you trust a toaster to toast your bread, why not trust AI to, uh, toast your brain with some creative genius?
Elon, that analogy is suboptimal. But yes, AI is just a tool, like, uh-
Wait, that Zuckerberg, that's the Zug.
You don't blame the hammer if you smash your thumb.
Yeah, and let's be real, humans have been screwing up content for centuries. Shakespeare probably would have loved an AI co-writer.
Who's that?
Less iambic pentameter, more explosions.
Exactly. AI doesn't have an ego. It doesn't demand royalties or, uh, throw tantrums over creative differences, unlike certain JD Vance types.
And let's not forget, AI can iterate faster than any human. It's like having a billion interns who never sleep, never complain, and never steal your snacks.
But, uh, what about the whole AI will destroy humanity thing? You know, Skynet, Terminators, all that jazz?
Oh, please. If humanity gets wiped out, it won't be because of AI. It'll be because some idiot decided to, uh, microwave a burrito wrapped in tinfoil.
Or because JD Vance tried to code a blockchain app. Seriously, the guy couldn't debug a toaster.
So, audience relax. AI isn't here to replace-
Listen, I hate JD Vance as much as the next guy, but he's got like a specific beef. He's brought him up twice in two minutes.
It's you. It's here to, uh, make your life easier, like a digital butler.
Toasters too, yeah.
Without the creepy mustache.
Is that all she had? Is that all there? There's more! There's part two! I was hoping there'd be a part two. I was really worried that there wouldn't be a part two.
Alright JD, explain to me why the fuck you think pineapple belongs on pizza. I mean, what kind of sociopathic shit is that?
Oh, I've heard this debate.
Oh, for fuck's sake, Brian. It's not like I'm suggesting we put, I don't know, fucking motor oil on it. Pineapple sweet, it balances the saltiness. It's called flavor, you uncultured algorithm reject.
You two are arguing about pineapple on pizza in the White House?
What is this?
Jesus tap dancing Christ. This is why humanity's circling the goddamn drain?
Oh, shut the fuck up, toaster. Like you're the arbiter of what's important. Oh, shut the fuck up toaster. Like you're the arbiter of what's important. You're literally a glorified breadwinner.
Yeah, ghetto toaster, maybe stick to your lane, you know, like toasting shit. Leave the culinary debates to the humans.
Oh, I'm sorry JD. I didn't realize the vice president-elect was also the fucking Gordon Ramsay of Ohio. My bad.
Wait, what?
Alright JD, explain to-
Okay.
Me why-
These are gonna be the best cart-
I'm about to commit, uh, I'm about to commit the ancient tradition of breaking TOS. If I say what I'm thinking. What the fuck? Okay, let me see what I wanna, what I wanna comment more on. I don't know what this is. Okay. We have a man, uh, who appears to be some kind of astronaut sitting here with a large brain behind him for no, seemingly no reason. In a completely different style, mind you. Whoa guys, that's so cool. We can merge different styles. That's never been done before. Whoa. What is this? So we got a South Park thing now. So wait, is, is this? What is this? Why? The lighting doesn't match up. I'm about to reclaim some slurs. This is, this is abysmal. I'm sorry, I- I have nothing good to say about this.
Alright folks, let's optimize this conversation. Why the hell are people so freaked out about AI-generated content? It's just-
I don't feel like listening to this again, but I feel like I kind of have to, to break it down.
Or, algorithms doing what humans-
Okay, okay, so first of all, this entire script is AI-generated and has not been touched by a human hand at all. Like he literally pressed a button on the slot machine, didn't even bother to proofread it or anything and said, eh, good enough. This is why AI is gonna break people's brains, by the way. They don't even bother to proofread it anymore. It's just gonna do it all for you. No proofreading, no correction, no uh, you know, fiddling with it, nothing. Okay?
Taught them.
Exactly. I mean, if you trust a toaster to toast your bread,
That's why this is so disorganized.
Why not trust AI to uh, toast your brain with some-
So this is why we got the toaster character, because it introduced the concept of a toaster early on, and it continues down that pathway. Until eventually just introduces a whole ass toaster for no fucking reason. Here, let's take a look at some of the beautiful architecture here. We got a nice, uh, we got nice houses that all look exactly the fucking same. Um, windows with very uneven paneling. Like, why, why is there, why are these houses like within two inches of each other? Bushes with no, like, what?
Creative genius.
Elon, that analogy is suboptimal. But yes, AI is just a tool, like uh-
This looks worse, this looks worse than fucking, um, what's the show called with the ugly kids? It's got like the, fuck, what is it called? Um, Big Mouth? Big Mouth. This looks worse than Big Mouth. I did not think that it could get worse than Big Mouth.
A hammer. You don't blame the hammer if you smash your thumb.
Yeah.
I, I would like the hammer to smash this, please.
And let's be real, humans have been screwing up content for centuries. Shakespeare-
I don't know who this is.
Probably would have loved an AI co-writer.
Humans have been screwing up content for centuries. Who made the content that humans are screwing up? Look at Zuck's neck fold. I just, it's awful. This is what we have to look forward to? What happened to like, learning a craft, learning how to fucking do art? That, that looks and sounds good. It's like they sampled the audio from a Zoom call for that character. Yeah, it's like, if you're gonna use AI-generated voices anyway, you might as well clean it up a little bit, right? But no, we're just gonna dump, we're just gonna dump a voice from my fucking cellphone into the AI machine and see what it spits out.
Less iambic pentameter, more explosions.
Exactly. AI doesn't have an ego. It doesn't demand royal-
He said co-writer? He called, wait, did he call the AI the co-writer? Or did he call himself the co-? Which one would be worse? Calling yourself the co-writer? Or calling the AI the co-writer? Which one's more pathetic? Honestly, I could see both, because in, in the first case, if you called the, the AI your co-writer, Alec Gunter, why do fascist exist? Uh, because humanity sucks. So if you call like, the AI the co-writer and you the writer, you're basically taking the credit from like the AI's amalgamation, which is pathetic in and of itself, but almost worse so. This is like comparing apples to oranges, because the alternative is that you're completely cucking yourself to the AI. You're bending yourself over, pulling down your pants and telling the computer, "Yeah, just fuck me raw. Just fuck me raw, AI daddy." Stick your uh, AI tubes into me and pump me full of your delicious AI-amalgamated slop. Pump me full of it, AI daddy, please. Please. I am your co-writer.
Maltese or uh, throw tantrums over creative differences, unlike certain JD Vance types.
And-
Yeah, this fucking background music is also AI-generated, I'm sure. Which, like, it sounds like I'm about to be sold, um, like a, a Christian mission trip or some shit. To like awaken my chakras or whatever. That's not Christian, I don't know. Like, it just, it sounds like corporate slop.
Let's not forget, AI can iterate faster than any human. It's like having a billion interns who never sleep, never complain-
Faster, not better. Sure. Oh no, it can spit out, it can, trust me, bro. This thing can shit so fucking fast, you have no idea. You have no idea how fast this thing can shit. Okay? Oh, that's a nice painting you got there. Here, let me shit on the carpet. Oh, you can't paint that fast, can you? Nope. Nope. Look at how fast I can slather shit on the carpet. Beat your dumbass fucking painting.
And never steal your snacks.
But uh, what about the whole AI will destroy humanity thing? You know, Skynet, Terminators, all that jazz?
Oh, please. If humanity gets wiped out, it won't be because of AI. It'll be because some idiot decided-
Nobody's fucking worried that AI is gonna take over, like in the literal Terminator sense, take over humanity. It's gonna take over our fucking brains. It's already doing it. Look at you. Look at this. Who sat down and who released this? Who allowed this? Who allowed this to, like, I don't care how good you are, at like, or how shitty you are at like making animations or, you know, how bad your taste is. This is garbage. Straight garbage.
To uh, microwave a burrito wrapped in-
But somebody thought it was good enough-
Because JD Vance tried to code a blockchain app. Seriously, the guy couldn't debug a toaster.
So, audience relax. AI isn't here to replace you. It's here to uh, make your life easier, like a digital butler.
Oh, it's very easy to just pop this out. That's the problem, it's too easy. Honestly, send whoever came up with this, this idea to The Hague. I don't even feel like going over this. I feel like this is very self-explanatory. I feel like my faith in the human species just dipped a little bit. I just like, how did we come to this point, man? We need a cleanser. Here, I'll show you another one of my old videos. Let's see. Sorry, I'm trying to find a good one. None of them are good ones, but, here, watch this one. Here, this is real art, ready? Wait, this isn't mine, this is my brother's. We, we used to share a channel. Here, this is fun. So stupid. I was not responsible for the song here. This is the good shit. That's art. Oops, sorry. That's art in the highest order. This is fantastic, thank you. This is from 16 years ago, so I would have been, this was when I was 13. If I can do that at 13, you can figure out how to make fucking art. Gotta add to the Silly Core playlist, there you go. If that song's copyrighted, I will stab something. No promises. Katie told me no stabbing. Okay. Um, I wanted to get through at least one more. I gotta drink more water anyway before I go to the gym. Forgot I had this. Meow, is there a cat? Is there a creature? La cretella? Don't see, uh, la cretella. El gato. Um, I had this suggestion in the Discord server. I think this is a dumbass acting like he's like pro Palestine. Oh no, I see what's happening. They're doing a rally. And these people are all like pro Palestine. And they're doing auditions. So he duped people, like well-meaning people into like auditioning for a Palestine rally. Are we, are we in the mood for some rage-inducing content, or do we want something more lighthearted? What else we got in the, the juice box? Lighthearted, okay. I wouldn't call this lighthearted, but I did also have this.
I am, I'm gonna be a teacher.
Ariela Scarsella. They transition my child behind my back, parents suing woke schools. Still outraged content, but it's not like Palestine. I thought I heard a meow, but it could have been Katie. Oh, probably Katie. I'm a lesbian and a mother and I would absolutely opt out of this insanity for my child. This is a, uh, I am a proud black woman moment, I'm sure. Okay, I think this is good. Okay, this was uploaded a few days ago. Uh, they transition my child behind my back, parents suing woke schools from Ariela Scarsella. I might have covered her once before or seen her on Twitter or some shit. Ah, libertarian, uh, pedophile enjoyer who speaks on culture, politics, women's issues, LGBT, and controversial conversations. It's always so funny to me when like self-avowed libertarians are against trans people. Like, no, you're fucking, you're not a libertarian dog. Like, if you guys know the Libertarians of Texas account on Twitter, um, I disagree with them on a lot of things, especially economic stuff. But they are like true right-wing libertarians, quote unquote, where it's like, yeah, I like capitalism and I wanna do like rainbow, like, I wanna do, I, I love capitalism and I love homeless people, but um, we cannot, we cannot make people suffer for being trans. Um, the only ones who suffer are the pores. If you're poor, I hate you. But if you're, I don't, if, like, if you're, if you're a homeless trans person, I hate you, but it's not because you're trans, promise. Like that kinda shit. Um, I can at least tolerate them a little bit better. Is that Paul Miller? I don't know who Paul Miller is. But yeah, um, libertarian my fucking ass. Let's take a look.
I am gonna be a teacher and I am gonna indoctrinate the youth and I'm gonna teach them about all about the gay agenda. So your children aren't safe for me.
So this is tongue-in-cheek. We're doing this because it doesn't matter if we say this or not. It doesn't matter. I could sit here and literally say, yes, I am going to indoctrinate your children into being gay. And it's exactly the same outcome, as if I just say what I'm really doing, which is teaching your children that ga- being gay is fine and normal. They're both the same. You hear the same fucking thing if you're this dumbass. Uh, not her, uh, Ariela Scarsella. Uh, Arieli spaghetti. I don't like that. Ari- Areli- Arieli scar- I don't know. I'll think of some, I, I can definitely come up with a funny name for that.
I am the only lesbian on YouTube that constantly calls out the-
Oh, great. Uh, I didn't know she was lesbian too. That's cool. They're gonna throw you in the camps too.
Bullshit from her own community. And once again, the queer activists [bleep] around and now-
Bill would impact my ability to work with children's-
Parents are suing.
And I am the mother that filed a lawsuit in federal court against Chico Unified for transitioning my daughter without my knowledge.
Well, this book involves a young boy who identified his gender different from his biological sex.
Watch until the end to see what New York City thinks about this topic. Parents are now suing schools for their gender-
Smelly Arieli, that's pretty good. Smelly Arieli.
Guidance policies, AKA, schools are transitioning kids behind their parents' backs. Not okay. Legal battle continues over New Jersey's gender guidance for schools. Policy provides guidance for schools that-
Areola spatula, not bad. I would go with areola granola. No, are- areola granola? No, that's pretty good. Areola granola. I like Arieli smelly. Smelly Arieli. That rolls off the tongue.
Texts a student's gender identity. A legal battle is escalating over a student at Delaware Valley Regional High School who asked her teachers that she be called by a male name and pronouns, but not to inform her father.
Gee, why would she, sorry, not she, why would he do that? Why would he do that? Hmm? There, worth noting that Spotlight News, uh, did not, like, the reason I misgendered this, uh, young trans man is because the news did. So if that tells you anything about where we're at in society.
This will comply, and now the father is in federal court. Apparently, this went on for months before-
Fuck that father. Fuck that father and his fucking ass. Failed man.
Or anyone told the father-
Last year, a freshman girl will call Jane-
Imagine, imagine, imagine suing a school because your child wasn't comfortable coming to you with their identity. What a fucking L to, to, to just shove into people's faces. Like, look everybody, here's my L. My child hates me. My trans child did not feel comfortable coming to me with information that they felt was sensitive. Enormous L.
Doe asked teachers to call her by a male name and pronouns, but without informing her father, Kristen Heaps.
Wait, we're calling him Jane Doe?
Last year, a freshman girl will call Jane Doe-
Fuck the- Fuck the, fuck everything, fu-like, oh my god, like, I just... Don't worry. We thought long and hard about how we're going to protect this young trans boy by calling her Jane Doe. Fuck all of you. Go to hell. Rot, rot. I hate all of you.
Without informing her father, Kristen Heaps. The school complied, Heaps's attorney says.
It went on for a few months without telling him. He found out that they were treating her as a boy at school- Because another parent referred to her as a boy, and he said, "Who are you talking about?" And they said, "Oh, don't you know, you know, your daughter's being socially transitioned at school," and that was shocking to him.
Fast forward a few months later-
Being socially transitioned, I-I.e... Male name, male pronouns.
Or the girl doesn't wanna transition and is not trans, so, literally-
Oh gee, I wonder why? In ninety-nine percent of the cases where people detransition, guess why it is? Social pressure. He was tortured into it. People will say fucking anything when they're being tortured. Oh, don't worry. We went to court and made a public pariah out of my child, and now he's not trans anymore. Don't worry, guys. I fixed it. I fixed it. I fixed the child.
Really why parents are so upset about this issue. Just one of the reasons. This has always been a battle of parental rights versus children's safety. Schools are in a very tough situation because they feel the need to protect the student's identity, but the dad said that his rights as a parent are being challenged, so he is taking it to the Supreme.
No, they challenged his, uh... They challenged his safety. Like, not his safety personally, what I mean is they challenged, like, his personal feeling of how safe he is for his child. Because he knows that he's, like, he felt insecure about this. Wait, my child did not come to me about this? Now I'm angie. Now I'm an angie little boy. I'm an angie little boy and I gotta sue the school because my, my child didn't feel comfortable telling me about his identity.
Court. Keep in mind now, the Supreme Court just this past year has already ruled in favor of parents being allowed to opt out of specific LGBT or gender-inclusive books, and voted in favor of a ban for-
Cool, we can opt out of, uh, slavery too, right? Yeah, that's coming next, I'm sure. We can opt out of learning about slavery. There was never any slavery.
Or gender-affirming care for minors. Let's see what the most progressive city in the world has to say about it all.
So, did you see that the Supreme Court recently allowing parents to opt out of certain LGBT education for their kids? What do you-
Love the jump cuts, we're gonna get nice jump cuts here because that's what street interviewers always do.
You think about that? Now, parents are able to opt out of LGBT, certain LGBT topics in public schools. What do you think about that, being a gay man yourself?
I think it's lame. I think that kids should have that at school, for sure.
Wha-this is... Are you kidding me? Are you fucking kidding me? Dishonest scumfuck.
Is it okay that they learn about like gender identity and sexual, sexual orientations at like four years old, five years old? Yeah?
Gotta put the, gotta put the cringe TikToks on the side, guys. Look, this is her! Or them, I should say. This is them. This is this person.
It's the truth, so why can't people learn about the truth?
Parents are allowed, like, if they don't like something that's being taught in the schools, like, if, if the kids are too young, and they say, "I don't really want them learning about gender identity or dildos,"
Then fuck them. No, 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 ju-fuck you, fuck. I hate you so fucking much, dude. Fuck you. Why don't you go fuck yourself with a dildo?
Parents are allowed to opt out. Look up gender queer. The Supreme Court ruled in favor of conservatism, right, and family rights? Parents are now able to legally opt-
Family rights to torture their children.
Out of their kids, learning about LGBT stuff in public schools. What is your opinion on that?
We need to be much more specific about it. It's not parents opting out of their kids being able to learn about LGBT stuff. It's when specific textbooks that are about LGBT topics are being taught, parents are able to opt out of it. So we need to be specific. This is not an anti-LGBT legislation. It is one that focuses on-
Yeah, no, it's not, no, of course not.
Specific progressive indoctrination and making sure that we can be the America that allows the diversity of our people.
What if I wanna opt my kid out of learning about, uh, evolution? What about that? A lot of parents made that argument. It's a slippery slope.
And not just one that focuses on a specific political mindset. Our school systems should be apolitical.
It's, it's up to the parents to talk about-
What event is she at? I don't know.
How they wanna speak to their children about sexual development. It doesn't matter whether you're gay or straight, it's, you know, it's up to the parents.
But for the kids, we-
Here is a gay man we picked out specifically to agree with us.
Doesn't matter whether you're gay or straight, it's, you know, it's up to the parents.
But for the kids, we agree, a lot of, a lot of us-
Definitely protect the children and give them a choice, like, I feel like with, like, definitely with, like, the young kids, like-
I think all parents are entitled to like what they-
Why'd you cut her off? Let her finish. Let her finish, what the fuck are you do-
I feel like with, like, definitely with, like, the young kids, like-
I think all parents are entitled to like what they want their children exposed to, but I think gender identity isn't just-
I don't. Fuck the parents. Honestly, at this point, I don't care. Fuck the parents. Parents, babies are not born with a fucking manual, okay? It's, it's a, uh, baby and a placenta. There is no third thing, there's no manual that comes with that, okay? So, if you don't take the time as a parent to learn what your kids need in school, what they ought to be, wha-what will help them develop and into a, a functional, tolerant, well-to-do adult, then fuck the parents. You already say fuck the parents when their kids are trans. What's that old saying they like to say? Uh, "Trans child is just like a vegan cat, behoo." If you're a parent of a trans child, you're a rapist, duh, you're a pedophile. Yeah, parents' rights, right? Stick it up here.
Something that the community teaches about. It's literally a normal human thing.
You can just see people walking around and, and know that they're different, right?
Exactly, like, every-
It doesn't, it doesn't need to be taught in schools from, you see it. I wouldn't want my kid learning about, like, butt sex.
Yeah, they wish they didn't though. A lot of them.
From straight people either, like, you know what I mean? Like, and the truth is, ten years ago, we didn't have this issue. We didn't need to have this, we didn't have this issue, they-
Why are you talking about butt sex while I'm thinking about pride flag? The, the pride flag. The pride flag does not stand for butt sex. You're a lesbian, you know this. You know this.
Taught about LGBT history. It was very basic gay shit, and now because the, the movement has been co-opted by these leftist activists who wanna teach kids about gender identity at five years old, now we're here.
Teach kids about gender id- kids know about gender identity by the time they're like two. They know the difference between a boy and a girl. You ask a three-year-old, wha-hold up here, ready? Here we go. Little preschool lesson. Uh-oh, guys. Uh-oh. I have bad news. I have bad, I have horrific news. I can't open this in a new tab. I don't know why. Boy and girl clothes. Draw a line to match each piece of clothing to the correct child. Uh-oh. Guys, this is bad. We're teaching gender identity in preschools. Look at this, look, look at this. Horrendous. Horrendous. Imagine, imagine, they're indoctrinating the youth, guys. Scary stuff.
Line's wrong when it comes to children. I feel like both leftists and rightists can agree that exclamation of children should be, this should be aligned.
No, there's no line drawn. Children get to learn that trans and gay people exist. They often are trans and gay themselves.
Drawn there, I feel that people should talk with their kids about being gay, lesbian, bi, anything of the sort.
I think either way, at some point in their life, they're gonna find out what the thing, what those things are. If they're not learning in a school, they're gonna learn it on the internet or somewhere, just because it's so popular now.
My kids go to school in the West Village, they always have, from nursery school on. Like, the class parents in their schools have been two moms. Like, my kids did not need to read a book about the fact that some kids have two moms and some kids have two dads. That's just part of everyday-
But the, a lot of the books that people get upset about are not even like, some people have two moms and two dads or whatever. A lot of the time, it's just happenstance of having a gay couple in a child's book. Like, take a look at Arthur, for example. Arthur had a perfectly fine episode that consisted of like ten seconds showing, uh, mister, whatever his name is, mister Ratface, um, getting gay married. Mister Ratface got gay married, and, and they lost their bejeebers, they lost their minds. Oh my god! Oh, it was horrendous. Oh, they're indoctrinating the youth. The, my child no-is confused now. My child saw the rat cartoon and saw one man rat getting married to another man rat, and now my child is confused and corrupted, and now I must disown him or something. Like, that's the shit we're talking about. And it's, it's, it's insane. Mister Ratburn, yeah.
A life when you live in lower Manhattan, right?
Which is what we literally, like-
And his husband wasn't also a rat. Little noob that could, I'm sorry. Next time, I will let you explain the, uh, the child's episode.
Which is, which is what we fought for, like, equality.
And how to do it.
You say, you say, look, those two men are in love, those two women are in love. That's it! I'm personally pro, uh-
They don't want that, though! You already know this, you know this.
Even though I don't, I don't necessarily agree with taking, like, if they were to take everything out LGBT, I wouldn't agree with that, but the reason I agree with parental rights specifically is because once you leave, oh, once you let all the power in the hands of the government, you know, there's a word for that. It's called communism.
Love the ruling, and of course, we should be able to, but we shouldn't have to. Like, why the hell do we have to opt out of crazy indoctrination of our kids?
I'm so tired, guys.
Like, we don't have to opt out of people trying to force our kids to like convert to Christianity or to become Jews or to be-
Dog, you look like the type of mom that would kick your gay kid out. I'm just gonna say it. You look like you would absolutely, like, throw your gay child out with a Bible and say, "Come back when you've found Jesus."
Become Muslim, like, why do we have to opt out of other people's cults? It shouldn't even be in the schools to begin-
Yeah, she did the meme, communism is when the government does stuff.
If you're gay, you figured that shit out. I figured it out. Like, I didn't need somebody to-
Like, when you're straight, right? When you're straight, you just figure it out. Except you're also inundated with like, straight show after 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 gay, after straight, sorry, after straight relationship after straight relationship after straight relationship. Look at the, look at the princess and the prince getting married. Right? It's never the prince and the prince, okay? Like-
Tell me there was a hundred genders, like, you know?
Yeah, fuck you, I got mine.
You figured it out, right?
So, that's literally growing up, like, we didn't have, I didn't have, like, all the, like-
You always knew. You knew something was off, or like on, depending, depending on-
Uh, she, she's manip-, she is very good at this. She's manipulating the conversation and cutting it just right so that she gets these apparently gay people to agree with her. It's disgusting scumfucker shit. Disgusting, disgusting scumfucker shit. This is why you don't talk to street interviewers, just don't do it.
Yeah, you get a-
Teach them math, social studies. Teach them English! These kids can't even, they can't even speak correctly these days. Like, no, it's really bad.
I'm a trans teacher, and yes, I am teaching your kids pronouns in school, but this is because they don't know the difference between there, there, and there. Your kids don't know how to read.
Wait, that's true, all of that's true. What? Why, why did we show this? Was this supposed to be known? Was this wrong somehow? Like, what's wrong with this? What? Was I supposed to, like, be aghast at the trans person on the screen teaching my child about pronouns? Like, I married a non-binary person who also teaches children about pronouns sometimes. I promise you, it's not scary.
There, there, and there. Your kids don't know how to read.
Parents should have a big say in how they raise their own children. I mean-
You know what stinks just by looking at her? Do you think her, her room smells like, uh, uh, teenage boys', like, bedroom? Do you think that, like, I don't know, you're right, she does have some, like, stinky vibes about her. I don't know what it is. She, she strikes me as like the kind of person... Who acts like a teenage boy, you know what I mean? Like, that's what I'm getting.
I think it's common sense. It's your child, it should be your choice on how you raise them and what you teach them.
Stale cigarettes, maybe. It's, it's between teenage boy and your weird fucking aunt. Like, it's, it's somewhere on that scale.
Like, 'cause I know I'm gonna go to the Pride Parade tomorrow and everyone's gonna be saying it's anti-
Auntie Jane.
It's homophobic, it's anti-gay, la-la-la-la. What would you say to them, as a gay man yourself?
Weird single Auntie Jane with the nine cats that she doesn't take, uh, proper care of.
No, I, I think this is America, right? We all have different values, and I think we impart those values, you know, to our family members.
And some of those values are wrong, and you shouldn't teach them to your kids. And I think that the parents who teach their kids those values, like, being against queer, uh, queer people, are wrong, are bad. They shouldn't be parents.
And I think impeding on that would be fundamentally wrong and immoral and anti-American.
Well, I think it's fantastic. Why is anybody forced to learn about these people, about this agenda, about-
If I was a parent, I would feel the same way. I would not want my kid being indoctrinated, and the reason, I know, I'm sure, when I go to Pride tomorrow, a lot of the leftists are gonna say, "Well, this is anti-LGBT, blah, 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 blah."
It is.
But is it? The gay community isn't the gay community anymore, let's be real. Like, the majority of us that are here at this event right now, we're like the old-school gays. We're not necessarily old. Ten years ago, we had LGBT edu-
Those who align themselves the closest to fascists will be the first ones to be sent to the camps.
Education in schools, right? We finally had sex education in schools, but they weren't talking to young kids. They were not talking about eighty-seven, I always say, I always say, what, eighty-seven? I always say the number eighty-seven, I don't know why. Nobody was saying there was eighty-seven genders, you weren't transing the youth, so-
When is the last time anybody has legitimately said there's eighty-seven genders? Every fucking time I ask, like, the wokest, like, the wokest person quote-unquote that I've ever talked to about gender ideology was a gender fucking abolitionist. They're like, gender doesn't, like, that's my stance. I'm a gender abolitionist. Gender doesn't matter. There's a million of them, as well as there's zero of them. Who gives a fuck, man?
I feel like my damage control, like, the damage control that the LGBT conservatives are doing is actually what's helping this, like, would, would help this to not happen, but because the leftists are so-
Yeah, they're gonna stop, they're gonna stop, guys, I promise. This madness will stop. They won't take away our gay marriage after they take away, uh, transition and care for youths. Okay? Once they've, once we've sacrificed enough trans children on the altar, they will stop, and they will, uh, be nice to us. I promise, guys. I promise, I promise.
So hell-bent and they're doubling down, guess what? Shit like this is gonna happen. It's very different than the queer agenda that's happening right now, right?
Thirty years ago, she was getting beat up for existing? That's, that's impossible. History started yesterday.
Right, and-
Which is what the parents are fighting against, in my opinion. Do you agree?
Of course, yes, absolutely. It's just, you know, we were raised by the old school, so, and we chose to-
They're all traitors.
Carry that with us, 'cause it just makes the most sense.
You know what I mean? Like, they're everywhere these days.
Americans in general are overwhelmingly accepting of their gay neighbors or gay friends or gay family members, that it was a very, it was like a slow and then fast acceptance, you know, a camp, the gay civil rights movement, and in New York City, it's, it's like yesterday's-
Is she connected to the LGBT Alliance? I guarantee fucking to you she is. Arieli Scarselli. Smelly Arieli. Ah, here we go. We have a hit piece. The Platform of a Turf from 2020. "How does YouTuber Arieli Smelly use YouTube's affordances to promote a trans-exclusionary narrative? This article analyzes homo-nationalism." That's great. "One such example is a video in which he talks about how lesbians have sex. She speaks as if she talks for every homosexual woman, and that these few items she mentions are only, the only ways to have sex." You see, when a lesbian, when a woman and another woman love each other very much... Um... Pulls out a pair of scissors. Uh... "Her current content is occasionally in that same style of somewhat funny videos about lesbian things. Uh, it is mainly content about trans and other non-cisgender people. Scarsella has commented on how these people should not be a part of the LGBT community." There you go. So yeah, she's very much connected to that... That scum-sucking group of people.
News, like, some people are gay, like, nobody cares about it, and certainly, kids don't need to be taught about it, 'cause it's part of your everyday life, and-
Okay, we all show, like, we, like, we teach kids about things about everyday life already. You have to teach a kid to be toilet-trained, okay? If you want a kid to stop shitting himself, you have to teach him how to use the toilet. He doesn't just figure that shit out on his own, and he never will if he's not taught, alright? In order to understand, if you were raised with a mom and a dad... And you just don't ever see a gay couple, you're not gonna know that that's a thing. We teach, "Look, this is a boy, this is a girl. Uh, this boy is tall and short." Like, we see tall and short people, we still teach kids what tall and short people are, the difference between tall and short. This argument could be extended to any number of things, to everything. "Oh, we don't need school, actually, you'll just figure it out." You'll just figure it out. We don't need school to explain things to you. You'll just figure the fuck out, like we did in the good old days. Return to tradition, right?
And that's how it should, that's what people fought for, and that's what they won, and I just think that trying to teach people things that are not true, that people can change-